All right, it looks like we can get started. It is 6:06. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 School Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Let's do a quick roll call. I'll just say your name and if you just say here, that's great. I will start with Eric Joyce, Vice President. I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. Here.
All right, super. Raquel Alvarez.
Here.
Mike Blessing.
Here.
And last but not least, Eleanor Evans.
Here.
Perfect. All right, we did a roll call. Moving on to Item 2B, Public Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. The Oceanside School Board unanimously voted the appointment of Liliana Gordon Gonzalez as Principal of Reynolds Elementary School. Super excited, I had the opportunity to work with Liliana as a teacher back in the day, and we're really excited to have her. Now we're, that was it, that's all we had to report out on. Item 2C, Student Representatives. I'll turn this over to Julie if you want to facilitate this.
Yes, we have our first student representative, Gabby Kimbrel from Oceanside High School.
Is Gabby in the room?
We're just going to have a moment of technical difficulty and we'll be back with you in just a second.
There she is, I see her.
Gabby Kimbrel, go ahead and unmute and if you want to turn on your screen, we're thinking that's you that we've promoted to speaker status.
Maybe she walked away, sometimes we do that.
Maybe.
Can we promote Tessa Irons from Surfside Educational Academy?
So we seem to be having some technical difficulty with our three students, Gabby Kimbrel, Tessa Irons, and Isaiah Aguilar. There's, there's Isaiah Aguilar.
Good evening.
Hi, Isaiah. Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Begin and the rest of the board members, as well as to Superintendent Dr. Vital and her executive staff and all who are present this evening for giving me time to speak. My name is Isaiah Aguilar and I am the ASB President and the City Representative from El Camino High School. In the section of Student Recognition, we have Jose Martinez. Wildcat Senior Jose Martinez is being rewarded, rewarded the DELL Scholarship. DELL Scholars receive $20,000 as well as personalized multifaceted support for the academic, financial, and emotional life challenges that may prevent students from completing college. They will also be given a laptop with a four-year warranty and other resources to support the scholar and their families. Congratulations, Jose. All of El Camino High is proud of you and your success. We also have Wildcat Junior Aaliyah Anderson, who is on the El Camino High varsity girls' basketball team. Recently scored her 1,000th career point at last Friday's game against Patrick Henry High School. Congratulations, Aaliyah. Regarding clubs and organizations, March 28th, Sunday, the Sunday before we returned back to school, our El Camino Programs ASB and PALS hosted freshman tours in the morning. In small, in small groups, socially distanced and all masked, we invited freshmen and new transfer students to school to be shown around campus since this would be their first time. ASB has also had a virtual week of activities and spirit days in remembrance of the one-year mark since we've been on lockdown, which was the Monday of March 8th to March 12th, Friday. And on the Saturday, March 13th, we hosted a virtual pep rally on our school's ASB Instagram account. It was a video collage with performances from our school's talented groups, Cheer, Palm, and ECDC. The week before going back to school, ASB made posters to be hung around school for the freshman tours, as well as posters for all of our sports games. Right now, we are excited to be discussing new ideas and projects that we can do now that we are back on campus. We also have Cheer and Palm. On March 15th, Wildcat Cheer Team and Palm Dance Group helped McCollum Elementary welcome back their students on their first day of school. And finally, sports. We're happy to share that sports, including football, cheer, boys and girls' basketball, girls volleyball, softball, and water polo, all had their senior night events and their games. Athletes got to walk down with their families and friends. Thank you all for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of fun things at El Camino High School, great. Do we have either Gabby or Tessa ready to go?
We do not, they're not in the room, Stacy, so we can move forward in the agenda.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so the next item is 2D, Approval of Agenda. I'll call for a motion.
We do approve.
Five seconds.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion or changes? Nope, all right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to Item 3, the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Vitale.
Yes, President Begin, we have a lot of good news to share tonight and actually needed to prepare a little slide deck so that we could contain all of the good news. So I think Mr. Moon will probably be transitioning our screens to the Good News Slide Deck. And first, I want to invite into the room the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, Jody Diamond. Jody is going to share a few words with us about the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. The selection is one of our students from El Camino High School, Mansa Ayala. And so Jody's going to talk about her a little bit, and then we're going to watch a video that Mansit produced to talk about what the Boys and Girls Club means to her and what the impact of this is and what leadership means to her. It's an outstanding video and we're very proud of her. So Jody, if you will jump on and share some information about the Boys and Girls Club, what a powerful and amazing honor this is for Mansay, and anything else you'd like to say. So Jody, the mic is yours.
Thanks so much. Hello, everyone, good evening. I'm Jody Diamond, CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Oceanside. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I want to keep my remarks brief as I know that you have a really full agenda tonight. It's been such an unconventional year in so many ways, but we still have extraordinary youth and we are thrilled to be able to continue the tradition of Youth of the Year. Youth of the Year is Boys and Girls Clubs of America's premier recognition program for club members. To be selected as Youth of the Year is the highest honor a youth member can receive. The title recognizes the outstanding contributions that the member has made to their family, community, school, and Boys and Girls Clubs, as well as any personal challenges and obstacles they have overcome. I would love to introduce you to our Boys and Girls Clubs of Oceanside 2021 Youth of the Year, Mansay Ayala. Mansay has been attending Boys and Girls Clubs of Oceanside since she was in kindergarten and is now a senior at El Camino High School with plans to attend Miracosta College upon graduation. It is, it is wonderful to be able to share with you this remarkable young lady, so please
Hi, everyone, my name is Mansay, I'm 17, I go to El Camino High School. I've been a club member for 12 years at the Boys and Girls Club of Oceanside Townsite. The thing I like most about the club is the ability to make new friends and meet new people. I also really like the team group and all the field trips that we go on. It's really great life experiences. My best club memory is being a part of the team groups and doing arts and crafts. My future plans are to go to college, study business administration, and hopefully get my MBA. I hope to get into art and fashion or media because media is at the forefront of the world, shaping and influences many people's opinions today. The pandemic has challenged me to be a lot more self-reliant as we're doing school at home now, so I have to manage my hours a lot more carefully. I've also found a newfound appreciation for things that once used to be monotonous, like going to grocery shopping or going to school. A leader needs to be, to be a positive influence and encourage those around me to reach their fullest potential. One of the biggest issues surrounding teens today is drug usage, self-confidence, and comparison. The club provides youth a better opportunity to see themselves in a positive light. I'm so grateful for the club to have provided me a safe place to be at and meet new friends from all different backgrounds. It's true, great futures start here.
Jody, thank you so much for taking the time to come to our meeting to introduce Mansay in the video, and we are very proud of you, Mansay, and your accomplishments. So Mr. Moon will bring us back to our Good News Slide Deck, and the next slide on the deck is our OUSD Employees of the Year. First off, we have our Classified Employees of the Year, Regina Basanas, Special Education Paraprofessional at Fusat Elementary, and eight and a half years in OUSD. Ms. Basanas is one of the MVPs of Fusat Elementary, who cares for all students across the campus. She freely gives of her time to interact with students and support the school in various ways, including making an annual motivation bulletin board, and with this year's theme being "Tough Times Don't Last, Tough Teams Do," and it is beautiful, I've seen it, it's gorgeous. Ms. Basanas will go on as a finalist for San Diego County's Classified Employee of the Year. Congratulations to you, Regina. Our next Classified Employee of the Year is Alan Sanders. Alan Sanders is the Lead Custodian at Oceanside High School, 30 years in the district. Mr. Sanders is known as a pillar of Oceanside High. He is devoted to all aspects of his work and demonstrates a leadership style that makes others want to work alongside him. He is warm, kind, and dear to all on the OHS campus. Congratulations to you, Alan. Our Teachers of the Year, first Alyssa Schramm, 4th grade teacher at Del Rio Elementary, eight years teaching. Ms. Schramm is a known advocate for all her students. She builds relationships to positively impact student learning, has a contagious enthusiasm, and continues to develop her powerful instructional strategies. She is a go-to person for her staff and goes above and beyond to support the Del Rio community. Ms. Schramm will go on as a finalist for San Diego County's Teacher of the Year. Zai Sanders, 7th and 8th grade education specialist at Chavez Middle School, 19 years teaching. Ms. Sanders believes that all students can achieve and helps them build upon their unique learning styles. She is intentional and engaging parents and helps fellow staff meet student needs through the IEP process. She goes out of her way to lead extracurricular activities and is an overall leader and unifier among her community. Ms. Sanders will go on as a finalist for San Diego County's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all of our Employees of the Year. Our next good news on our next slide here is a recognition for Eric Franzen as the 2021 Innovative Principal of the Year Award. This award is bestowed upon Eric from the Classroom of the Future Foundation. Eric was nominated by APIR, and this is for Innovation in Education Awards, highlighting champions of educational innovation in the community. Eric will be officially recognized at the 18th Annual Innovation in Education Awards later in May at SeaWorld in a hybrid event. Congratulations, Eric, we're very proud of you as well. And our last piece of good news is, and this happened in March, it was a hybrid event and I had the great honor of being able to attend this event. In March, Matthew Jennings, our Director of Communications, hosted the California School Public Relations Association Annual Conference. The conference was over the course of two days, Thursday and Friday, and during this conference, our communication team was very pleased to accept on behalf of OUSD two awards at the highest honor. We received an Award of Excellence for our Realtor Certification Program and an Award of Excellence for our Community Mailer that went to every household. And in even bigger news, Dakota Shelton, our Communication Specialist, was selected as the Causpra Emerging Communicator of the Year. Congratulations to Matthew, Dakota, all of our Employees of the Year, our Student of the Year, and this wonderful recognition for community members related to Oceanside Unified School District. Thank you, Dr. Begin.
Thanks for the good news. Great, congratulations, everyone. All right, moving on to Item 4, Board Reports. I'll start with Vice President Eric Joyce, do you want to share?
Sure, a couple of things that I was able to attend in the last month. The first was the Trustee Review Committee for NICSCE, which is our North Coastal Consortium for Special Education, and there are group districts that come together to pool services for our students with special needs. They are a continuing resource for all of our families, so please be sure to check out the resources they have available on their website at nixe, N-C-C-S-E dot O-R-G. I was able to go to a governance with equity training with some of our governance team and looking at ways that we can bring equity lens into our governance every day and every month that we continue to work on leadership in this district. I was able to attend a SPED Parent Panel, which was phenomenal, so much great information. Again, some of that information, they did a 101 on IEPs, which, you know, is an ongoing need for parents with special needs. I got to watch soccer and football at the high school. I got to go to Jefferson, welcome back to the campus, which was really fun to see the scholars from Jefferson come back on the campus and some for the sixth graders, some of them had never been on campus before, so they were, they were looking like sixth graders walking into campus. It was really a special event, I got to meet the group that does, the ACE group that does the JMS motivators, and they get there at 6:30 in the morning for kids that come in before school and do things like mindfulness Monday, and I think they do karate one day, and they do all kinds of amazing events early in the morning before school starts. So if you go to Jefferson, check it out, it's a pretty awesome thing. And then the highlight, I finally get to see, another highlight was that I got to see Surfside's campus. And even though the campus still needs some love and special attention and working on that, I got to see our first children that came back on the campus, the, in our childcare program, and I got to see a lot of, I got to meet a lot of students who had been on campus for the first time this semester, and they were really excited, and I got to hear their teachers sing their praises about how hard they had worked to stay together. So it was a busy month because I had some spring break time, but it was great to see all the great things around campuses.
Thanks, Eric. Let's see, Eleanor, would you like to share?
Yes, thank you very much. I attended the Safe School Safety Committee, and basically the focus was on student and staff, student and staff safety regarding participation and safety during earthquake, if there was an earthquake. I also attended several community committee member, committee meetings, and that was it.
Great, thank you, Eleanor. I'll head over to Raquel Alvarez, would you like to share?
I see, I also went to the School Safety Committee meeting and just great to see again the communication happening on what needs to be going on with our campuses and the conversations that are happening through there and appreciate all the conversation there. I also went to the Governance with Equity Committee meeting, or Governance with Equity meeting, and it was amazing. You hear and you understand all the different things that need to happen and how we want to make changes sooner than later happen within our school district, and I love that our district is actually at that point of where we are actually are, where we're making changes and hearing and wanting to be at the top of the flagpole and being noticed or being on the flagpole. I heard that in another committee meeting that I had gone to, and I appreciate that within our district and from all of our staff that we have. I also went to the parent, the parent support group for SPED and the conversations again for the IEPs, and for those of you that don't know that we do have a support group for our parents within first fed, just know that that is out there, and if you don't know, please ask. Eric or myself or even Dr. Begin, we all know about the group itself and when the meetings are so that we can get you connected because it is an important group to be a part of, and some amazing conversations are there. And I went to Jefferson to take a visit and realized how much love we really need to put into that campus. And I'm excited for what we're going to be doing as we go and look at what we're going to be doing there to make it beautiful and inviting for all of our scholars there. And I went back to school shopping with a couple of students, you know, TC invited me to go back to school shopping with a couple of our students from elementary, and that was fun because they were excited to be able to be back with their friends, and these were students that were already struggling and being back in school and not wanting to go and being there, but with the support of TC, they, they felt that want and that desire to be back on campus again, so I thanked them for giving me the honor to be there to just see the joy within our students, that that was amazing, and I think that's pretty much why I'm here. Thank you.
You guys have all been busy. You're unmute, you gotta unmute. I know, I hate that.
Really, sorry. What's exciting for me is to hear all you guys talking about engaging back onto the campuses like you all like to do all the time and have been, haven't been able to do because of COVID, and so that's really heartwarming. I know it's a challenging period here, we don't want to get too excited, but everybody is, has a bubbling excitement that we're turning the corner on this thing, and that's, that's really exciting, and that's my message to share to everybody that we appreciate the work that everybody's doing out there and stay safe. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike, and I'll wrap it up. I attended a two-way bilingual immersion steering committee meeting with fellow trustee Eleanor Evans. I also did a site visit to Jefferson Middle School before they opened, and yes, Jefferson, the teachers over there had a great conversation with myself and trustee Alvarez and really shared some of their passions and their visions for that campus. I also attended the Special Education Parent Panel that Raquel and Eric joined, and that was super informative, and I'm hoping we can continue those. And I just wanted, my son started over at Chavez Secondary School and he was very anxious and his first day he managed and everything was new and different, but he figured it out, and I wanted to say a huge shout out to all the teachers, both secondary and elementary, for making this work, for, you know, being flexible with us and the in-person instruction and doing your best in the situation we're in for our students. So thank you. If we have no more board reports, I'll move on to Item 5, which is General Consent Items. We have quite a few, and I do know we have a public speaker on one, so I'll call for a motion to approve the general consent items.
I'll move approval of consent items A through double H, no, double Q, with acknowledgement that Items C and D are being discussed by someone for the public.
Thanks. All right, thanks Eleanor, thanks Mike. All right, do I have any discussion from the board members? Looking around, nope, all right, then we'll open it up to public comment, and we have one public comment. Todd Madison.
All right, thanks. Do you want me to talk about C and D combined, or do you want me to stop after C and?
Do you need three minutes for each?
No, no.
Okay, then combine them if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, it'll be less than, less than three minutes for both.
Okay, great, go ahead, Todd.
So thank you. So anyway, so on C, great to see all the new hires here, it looks like the district's providing some opportunities for people to work, which is great, given the general unemployment level out there now, this is awesome. It was good to see the good news about our support staff a little earlier as well. I remember last year, we saw Personnel Commission report noting the district gets an average of seven fully qualified applicants in every opening, which is a number a private industry recruiter would kill for, so that's great, people like coming to work for us. A note on these orders, since finding out last year the district didn't keep statistics on employee turnover, I've been doing that myself, adding the 13 resignations here gives us a total of 46 voluntary resignations this year, with 737 classified FTEs in the adopted budget, that means we have a voluntary turnover rate of 6.24% so far this year, which annualizes out to 8.56. According to ADP, one of the largest payroll processes in the world, the industry average for the education sector is 19.2, which is over twice OUSD's rate. So we have a very low turnover rate, which is awesome, must mean people like working here, they feel adequately paid and like it, like it, and thanks to OUSD management for that. So moving on to D, similar on there, you know, I think it's, it shows that people like working here, we have such a low number of resignations, four resignations here gives us a total of 20 this year, 918 certificated FTEs means their rate is 2.18%, annualized 2.99%, which is six times lower than the industry standard for the education sector. Again, it's a great testament to how much people like working here, and I need to point out, having managed groups of people like this, that it certainly means they enjoy working for the people they work for and that they feel adequately paid, otherwise they would be looking for other jobs, so it's great to see that. Thank you very much to OUSD management.
Thank you, Todd. With no further public comments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of General Consent Items A through QQ, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries 5-0, that was quite a bit of items. So we're moving on to Item 7, Student Services, and I believe we have a presentation, so I will turn this over to Dr. Vitale.
And I will promptly turn this over to Dr. Lovey and team, and I just want to let the board know that we have a lot of information in this presentation because this is before several items that we are asking you to approve tonight, so please know that this will go a little bit longer, so folks at home, get your popcorn, get your soda, but it's really good information and I think it will really help you make an informed decision on several items that are following on the agenda. So with that, Dr. Lovey and team, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be able to introduce our Student Services team led by Dr. Jordy Sparks. Since coming to the district, Dr. Vitale has made it very clear the importance of ensuring that we have every support available to our students to make sure that they are successful. The team has worked very hard in collaboration with leaders across our district, teachers, certificated classified leaders, to really ensure that we are identifying those barriers that may be causing students to not have success and those opportunities that we have to improve our relationships with our community. Throughout this presentation, you will see that there are, we hope to demonstrate for you how each facet of our social, emotional, and connections contribute to an overall successful program for our students. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sparks and his team.
Thank you, Dr. Lovey. Just wanted to make sure everybody can hear me okay, if you can give me a thumbs up, make sure I'm good to go. All right.
Good to go.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. So good evening, thank you again, Dr. Lovey, good evening, Board President, Dr. Begin, members of the Board, and Superintendent, Dr. Vitale. This evening, you will hear from the Student Services team, including Maisha Wiggum and Dieter Swank, Coordinators of Student Services, and myself regarding the work to ensure student support, student safety, and student success. You'll hear about the great work of our counselors and assistant principals, how we measure student responses to their attitudes about their own well-being, and how we partner with supports inside and outside of OUSD. You also hear about how we have navigated the challenges of the pandemic to keep students connected and engaged, and how we are thinking about the work ahead of us as we continue to bring students back to in-person learning models. Our aim in this update to the Board of Education is to highlight the ways in which we go about creating the conditions for teachers and school staff and for students to do what they do best, which is to teach and learn. Next slide, please. Part of creating the conditions is cultivating a mental health ecosystem, an intricate network of supports, services, partners, data, and care for students. That interact with and depend upon each other and on, upon each other. This looks like mental, socio-emotional. Intervention and connection, all support. Our approach has been to coordinate with all of our partners in such a way that there's no disproportionate reliance. On one resource over the other and so that our student services team can serve as a liaison and a bridge between. The coordination of services and support for our students. So a mental health ecosystem might look like care, mentorship, counseling. Crisis support, tutoring, problem solving, and it looks diverse in order to meet our students' diverse needs. Next slide, please. This ecosystem is made up of many parts, resources, people, supports and services that work together to create conditions for teaching and learning. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to highlight many of the factors that contribute to the ecosystem. That support students' social, emotional and mental well-being so that they can in turn focus on their academic success. This is especially true when students experience crisis or navigate uncertainty or experience any sudden change that might impact their ability to be successful in school. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We first want to start by highlighting the great work of our counselors. With the addition of elementary counselors in the nineteen twenties school year, we now have twenty-five secondary counselors. One C T E counselor and eight elementary counselors. They have been a constant during times of great uncertainty, anxiety and change. Our social, emotional, mental health rock for our students, especially in a year unlike any other, they met the challenge with poise, professionalism and passion. To meet our students' social, emotional and guidance needs. This is the group of our wonderful counselors here. Next slide, please. A true multi-tiered system of support or an M T S S model requires that there be a consistent approach to the academic, behavioral and socio-emotional learning needs. Of students and that tier one or universal support be available to all students. In our O U S D model, our elementary counselors curate and create lessons to teach the five social, emotional learning competencies on a daily basis. Across all elementary classrooms with students receiving at least introductory lessons and often enrichment lessons on competencies such as. Social awareness, self-awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making and self-management. At this point in the year, over two thousand social, emotional learning lessons have been taught in elementary schools or elementary classrooms, excuse me. Providing a common language across our schools with our students and staff and effectively laying a tier one foundation for all of our students. Next slide, please. Here's an example of a learning outcome from just one of our social awareness lessons in the elementary school classroom. You'll see here that this lesson was about social awareness. Specifically talking about stereotyping and how to increase empathy. In this lesson alone, there was a forty-nine percent increase of students knowing what stereotyping is, developing that social awareness. And the big piece to highlight here is that there was an eighty-two percent increase of students who strongly agree that they know how to practice empathy. When stereotypes arise. So again, just an example of the type of S E L lessons that students in K through five classrooms are receiving. Next slide, please. Our secondary counselors, in addition to their own regular in-class guidance lessons, they provide academic support such as guidance counseling. College and career planning and specifically C T E support and planning. Our secondary schools have an equivalent S E L curriculum that's focused on the five competencies to the elementary version that's available to them. In addition, you'll see that our counselors provide direct student support, social, emotional learning. They are true parent and guardian community connections. In addition to the academic of guidance, academic guidance, they are coordinators of care. Over five hundred referrals at the mid-year point this year have been made to additional services for students to receive additional support. And three hundred twenty-four five oh four academic plans exist with fifty of them being initial just this year alone. Next slide, please. We also want to lift up the work of our assistant principals. These folks are our child of fine, child find aficionados. They are the admin on the front line, addressing all issues, big and small, and communicating, collaborating and conquering alongside the student services team. These are frontline responders. They are an extension of our student services team and we added elementary A Ps to the mix in the year nineteen twenty. We've had great success with working with them as well. One of the many aspects of the assistant principal role is the administration of the panorama education survey. Which is our social, emotional learning, universal screener and S E L dashboard tool. This is an opportunity to measure what matters, collecting student responses and perspectives directly from students. On how they feel about their relationships with their teachers, their sense of belonging at school and what their experiences are with the five social, emotional learning competencies. Panorama as a tool is new this year and the first administration was in the beginning of the year when we were all virtual. And the current window is running now so that we have clear data to measure from one administration to the next. Next slide, please. We want to talk about measuring what matters. A Ps again help coordinate the panorama survey administration. You'll see here that we have teacher-student relationships and student belonging as the two important categories. Of what we're wanting to measure. Why is that? We chose teacher and student relationships and student belonging because we believe that students who have positive relationships. With adults in their school and who feel a sense of belonging in their school community are more invested in their own success and the success of others. Additionally, we believe that for many students, school is a place where they seek belonging and community. And we want to hear how they're, how we are doing fulfilling that desire of our students. There are four indicators and I want to highlight two. Ninety-four percent of our students in grades three through five responded their teacher is respectful to them. And eighty percent of our students in grades three through five responded that they feel positive sense of belonging at their school, even during the time of mostly virtual learning. Next slide, please. Overall measures of teacher-student relationships in grades three through five are at a positive eighty-two percent. With a sense of belonging at seventy-four percent. Both of these averages are among the ninetieth percentile in comparative districts that use the panorama tool. Next slide, please. The same responses regarding teacher-student relationships in the secondary grades are at a positive of fifty-seven percent with sense of belonging at forty-one percent. While there's progress, we are looking forward to seeing the second survey administration currently happening now as students have begun to return to in-person learning environments. Next slide, please. In creating this ecosystem, we want to continue to measure the things that we feel are important, such as teacher-student relationships and student belonging. We've added a great deal of supports as you'll see throughout this presentation so that we want to continue to measure their impact. In grade six through twelve, a couple of the pieces I want to highlight for you is that ninety-one percent of those respondents indicate that their teachers are respectful to them. And overall fifty-four percent of those respondents indicated that they feel a sense of belonging at their school. Next slide, please.
Dr. Sparks?
Please.
I, I, I have a question statement on page eleven and twelve of the slides. Where the, you talk about mental health grades six through twelve and you're saying that. Was forty-three percent that students didn't feel the connection? And forty-one percent in terms of sense of belonging. Is this because of the fact of the pandemic and students were not actually physically with their. Instructor? Or were there other factors involved with this?
Right. I, I, I'm sure there were other factors involved that were also pandemic related. One of the other slides that were reviewed during this presentation will show kind of what's on the mind and specifically of our secondary students. But in particular here, I would think that a big piece of it is not having the in-person connection of being at school because these, this survey was administered in the beginning of the year. And then as, as I share, we're administering the second round of the survey now over the next three weeks. And so we'll see good comparative data with how folks are feeling connected to school versus how they may have felt connected earlier in the year.
Okay, will we have a survey done in the fall or?
We will. We'll continue.
Semester fall.
Yes, we'll, we'll continue to administer the survey twice a year in the fall and in the spring. And so we're in our current second administration now and then we'll start a new administration in the fall of next year as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sparks, can you share how that survey, like the format in which the students took that survey?
Yes, so the, the fall survey was administered completely virtually, so students would have done this on their devices. Each student in grades three to twelve have a panorama account that is facilitated by their teacher. And the survey goes directly to them, so they would access in very similar ways that you would access. I ready or Google Classroom, you log in with your student I D with your Google information and you'd be able to access the survey that way. And it leads you through a series of questions that focus on teacher-student relationships, sense of belonging. And how they feel that they are doing with the five social, emotional learning competencies, but it was all done virtually in the fall. It's still being done on a, on a device during this administration and for those who need it, there are paper copies available as well.
All right, super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, one more follow-up since we're all, since we're in the space, the panorama. So, one thing is I appreciate bringing this before the board because, you know, this, this isn't. Favorable necessarily, but it gives us percentiles on how we compare to other districts and I think it's important for us to have the conversation, but. Is this comparing us to districts that had given the survey at the same time, just from a data perspective, if we were all. Virtual, then it would be a truer data point than if it was comparing us to school districts that they'd done at the previous year.
That's correct.
If you know that.
That's correct. Trustee Joyce, this actually compares us to districts who administer the survey at the same time that we administer the survey with the fall administration.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for the questions. All right. Good to go? Great. So another part of our ecosystem, as part of our ecosystem, we've asked all of our partners to measure what matters and to report back to us. Just how they are doing and reaching our students who have counseling, support and therapy needs in order to experience success at school. Wellness Together is one of our great partners established by major way of influence from the Student Mental Health Initiative from the El Camino High School Student Group. We are in year two of a five-year partnership, which is fully funded through a grant from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Wellness Together provides to us four full-time mental health specialists who are either licensed clinical social workers or marriage family therapists. And they provide cognitive behavioral therapy and mental health counseling to students all coordinated by the school counselor and referred to the school counselor. You'll see here that the four schools that they support currently are Jefferson, King, El Camino and Oceanside High. We have an over ninety percent fulfillment rate, which means with the hundred three students that were referred this year so far. Ninety-three of those students are regularly receiving counseling services, which puts us just over ninety percent in comparison with other districts. Who's rates are primarily in the seventies. So we're proud of our partnership and the follow-through that's happened with Wellness Together.
Question with that, sorry. How do I, how do we identify? Because if the students are virtual and we're finding that they have a need and so how are the counselors identifying? The need for the student to be able to get them the services that they, that they offer.
Right, great question. Students can request support. That's one way. Also, you'll see a little bit later in the slide that at this point in the year, we are averaging over four thousand plus daily check-ins with our students. Especially in the secondary realm between counselors and students. So counselors often have a pulse on what students need, what type of support. And how they might benefit from additional counseling. So if a student is requesting counseling from one of our O U S D counselors. And they provide that service, but they feel they need an additional service, maybe like a tier two or tier three support, additional, maybe longer term counseling. They can refer them to Wellness Together and the Wellness Together team immediately during the pandemic. When we shifted schools to virtual last year in March, began their virtual support as well. And they also over time have shifted back to having in-person counseling sessions as well.
Then how do the students know that these services are there? So have we communicated to the students of saying, hey, if you need some support or if something's going on? So how do they know that? Because I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at students that I know in our community that, that could use some support, but. They're not going to openly just go and say, hey, I need counseling, I need to talk to somebody. So how do we reach out and how do we make sure that those students? Aren't falling between the cracks too?
Yeah. It's, it's a great question. So there are oftentimes indicators. For a student, whether they are missing a lot of school, they're sharing that there are challenges at home, there may be, the grades might be slipping. They seem to be maybe withdrawn. There's a lot of indicators that, that our teachers, our staff and our counselors can look for and oftentimes. Just asking the simple question, how are you doing? Do you need some additional support? Do you need to talk? That starts a conversation to where one of our counselors, one of our teachers or one of our admin can there, from there see. What type of support the student might need. So there's indicators that all of our staff are trained to look for and to pay attention to. And we also do really encourage our students, especially in the secondary realm, to be advocates for themselves and speak up if they need some sort of additional support. But it still remains a challenge that, you know, how do you know what type of support as someone needs it if they're not vocal about it? We also get parent requests, so we will have parent guardians who may reach out to the school and request some additional support. And in that, in that way, we, we filter that through our counselors and our counselors either support them directly or they make a referral to one of our services that we'll be talking about tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is the parent guardian referral, is that. Formal or can we just call the school or is there paperwork involved with that?
There, the, the only paperwork really involved is that there has to be permission for students up to a certain age for them to receive the services. So oftentimes, like in our younger grades, Palomar Family Counseling or elementary counselors will have to get consent from a parent to support their student. But oftentimes in the upper grades, students can see a counselor or a therapist without that same approval.
Okay, and I, can I assume that it's multi-language too as well?
That's correct. Yes, they, we have both in Wellness Together and several other of our partners, which I'll highlight tonight. We have multilingual bilingual therapists.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we are ready to go to the next slide. So it's important for us to not only to know what that students are being supported and served, but also for what purposes and for what reasons. So we ask all of our partners to track this information and to share this information with us so we have a pulse on how students are doing. Matching students' needs with the appropriate services and resources is a critical part of balancing our ecosystem. You'll see here that through Wellness Together, the reasons for referral range from worry or anxious mood to sadness, to relationship problems. To bereavement and to potential substance use and abuse issues. So these are part of the intake process. And we have a, an ongoing understanding of what our major challenges students might be struggling with when they're going to. Receive school-based therapy. Next slide, please. Another one of our great partners is Palomar Family Counseling Services. They provide twenty-five master levels trainees, counselors. Split amongst our schools. They generally support some of our tier one, but mostly tier two needs. This, this is support that's coordinated again by our O U S D counselor. The counselor at the school site serves as the person who makes the referral. But also a parent can request this support, but it still goes through our counselor. Communication between the Palomar Family Counseling Team and our team in student services and the support team at the site, which consists of the admin and the counselor. Is ongoing and collaborative. This is something that we work on regularly with Palomar Family. This group in particular was responsive and resilient to the reaction to the pandemic. They pivoted immediately. And they continue to care throughout the summer for any students who are receiving counseling, as well as adjust their service models to satisfy our virtual demands. You'll see here that up to the mid-year checkpoint, three hundred forty-two referrals were made to Palomar Family Counseling. And two hundred forty students were actively receiving services from Palomar Family Counseling. Next slide, please. Again, just some reasons as to why students might be referred to Palomar Family Counseling Service. Ranging from social issues to safety concerns, family issues and behavioral issues. Counselors from Palomar Family Counselors, counseling not only provide therapy, but they also help students set goals around some of these issues as well. Next slide, please. A new partnership that we launched prior to the winter break with the understanding that in addition to experiencing isolation from the pandemic and schools being closed. In-person learning, winter break, we realize is hard for some people. Additional support being available was important to us. And so we launched a partnership with a twenty-four seven care concierge or case manager called Care Salas. This provider can directly connect students and their families or staff and their families to a provider of their choice. And assure that they may get to and through the appointment and offered services. Think of this almost as like an Uber for mental health services, getting someone connected to a local mental health service. It's an additional layer of access for our people to get care when they need it and how they need it. This also supports the healthcare benefits that families might have access to. And this can be accessed either through the school where the referrals made from the counselor to Care Salus. Or students, families, staff and their families can access it directly through a specific OUSD partnership. Through a website that they can access to. Next slide, please. This again, just some of the reasons as to why students may be referred or be seeking out support from Care Salus. What Care Salus will do is, once a student or a staff member or family member answers some questions around. Either substance use disorders or mental health disorders, what insurance they might have. And again, they don't have to have insurance in order to get this service. Once they answer those questions, they're provided with a list of providers in their area that can see them immediately. They can select what language they want to, their therapist to, to, to be fluent in. They can do a geographical selection. And the goal with the Care Concierge Service is they help, they help make that appointment for them. They follow up with them to make sure they attended the appointment. And if the referral was made from the school, they follow back up with the school counselor or the school psychologist or the school admin who made the referral. To let them know that the student has been receiving the support that they requested. Next slide, please. Pass AmeriCorps is another one of our grant-funded invaluable partners who support students at all of our secondary schools. And three of our elementary schools through goal-setting accountability, mentorship and simply living life alongside our young people. They've also demonstrated the utmost commitment to OUSD in trying times, pivoting to support our food distribution last year and this year. As well as through the summer, helping with school reopenings, volunteer opportunities, all the while maintaining their communication with the students who are on their caseload. And checking in with them on a regular basis. You'll see here that they've served up to this point mid-year, they've served two hundred ninety-six students. And goals and academics, goals and behavior and goals and attendance. We believe that goal-setting is important because effective goal-setting leads to long-term success. Past mentors set and help students follow through on their attendance goals and academics, behavior and attendance. Next slide, please. Transformational Consulting is a small but mighty group that's responsive twenty-four-seven, restorative in their approach with students and families. And recognized through any part of the city and any neighborhood as a support, a connection and advocate. While students connecting to school, while students connecting to school and their teachers and to their counselors remains of critical importance as well as a continued challenge. TC, as we call them, is often the group that facilitates that connection, allowing a student and a family to experience just the right amount of success. To know that someone in our organization has their back and is invested in seeing them be successful. This team provides a menu of wraparound services and collaborates daily with the Student Services Team. To provide responsive and ongoing support of students and families in need. You'll see here that their support ranges from mentorship, student contact, basic need support. Home visits and COVID-nineteen specific support. Just this year alone, over four hundred of their students, four hundred students in our organization and OUSD have been supported directly by TC. We'll talk a little bit more about COVID-nineteen specific support on the next slide. Next slide, please. What this has looked like for TC to support specifically during our time of COVID-nineteen, the pandemic. Is on the ground since day one of schools pivoting to virtual and knocking on doors, delivering food, delivering Chromebooks and iPads. And identifying hotspot needs and delivering those hotspots to families who need them and more. So you'll see here that this has been a group who really has done a lot of the groundwork in connecting students. Both literally and figuratively to schools. Next slide, please. Here is just a quick summary of the work of our mental health ecosystem partners. And our school staff who have contributed to creating this mental health ecosystem. As I shared earlier, OUSD counselors at this point have had over four thousand three hundred fifty daily check-ins with students. Regular check-ins that did, that they do with students specifically in our secondary. And our elementary counselors regularly have the SEL lessons and those SEL lessons continued virtually throughout schools being virtual. You'll see again the summary of how many students at the mid-year checkpoint have been supported by these respective partners. Next slide, please. So again, just to review what a mental health ecosystem looks like and OUSD, what we're trying to accomplish, our school counselors and school psychologists. Supporting through social emotional lessons, screeners and surveys, safety and intervention and mentoring, which Dieter Swank will share more about in a few minutes. Ongoing mental health support for students who need that and also by extension their families. And wraparound support that includes groups like Transformational Consulting, Foster and Homeless Youth Supports, which you'll hear more about by Ms. Wiggum. And Community Resource Guides, Expanded and Enrichment and Secondary Learning Centers, which we're excited to share some more information about this evening. We'll shift now, the next slide, please, we'll shift now a little bit to talking about the student, staff and school safety. And demonstrating how physical and emotional safety continues to be a high priority for our Student Services Team and for our district as a whole. I want to highlight first, next slide, please, I want to highlight first the work of our nurses. Part of maintaining a mental health ecosystem focuses on the care and well-being of students. Is actually the physical care of our students. And to that end, our nurses team is an extension of our Student Services Team. We are nine strong with our nurses, these medical professionals are itinerant and support multiple schools. We added two bilingual nurses this year for a total of three bilingual nurses who speak Spanish as their second language. Your first language, but English is their second. Claire Hudson serves as our department chair and Sandra Ward is our head epidemiology nurse and chief author of our pandemic response safety plan. I'm now happy to welcome Dieter into the presentation, Dieter Swank is our coordinator of Student Services. To talk about additional partnerships and practices for the safety of our schools, Dieter.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks, good evening, board members and Dr. Vitale. During this portion of the presentation, we will focus on our safety procedures, practices and partnerships. To begin, safety is important because learning environments that support physical and emotional safety. Are linked to improve student outcomes. Our schools address safety in a variety of areas, including violence, bullying, harassment and substance abuse. Our recent investments in protocols and practices are listed here. They include a new visitor check-in system known as our Raptor Visitor Management System. A protocol that was developed by our school psychologists to address students' health harm and. Harm to others protocol. We also have worked with Crime Stoppers to bring students speaking out, which is an anonymous reporting. System that students in middle school and high school can use. We went through all of our campus, security assistants and officers went through twenty-four hours of training during December and January. And we also have a BARK, a new system that's known as BARK. The BARK is an alert system that is computer-generated. And these alerts come to us through emails that are activated when certain words or phrases are used within our. Oceanside Unified School District Google Suite system. Next slide, please. Our initial step in the safety process is the development of a culture of connectedness. Creating this culture is essential for the development of a community that is safe for students and staff. Next slide, please. Oceanside Unified School District is continually striving to strengthen our connections with our community and city partners. Our first partner, our, our first partner of note is the San Diego County Office of Education. Through this partnership, we have recently implemented updated training to our site admin, counselors and psychologists. Around best practices to screen and respond to threats. And we brought human trafficking awareness education to our middle and high school campuses. We also work closely with our community nonprofits. This group includes Vista Community Clinic, Boys and Girls Club, Transformational Consultants, Interfaith. Palomar Family Counseling and North County Lifeline. These groups have provided a variety of supports for our students and families. Examples include rental payment support, assistance in filling out paperwork, medical resources. And academic and enrichment support opportunities. We also partner closely with the city of Oceanside. Examples of this partnership include a city-hosted monthly meeting, allowing community partners to come together. And share information and resources. The city also runs and provides space for a variety of academic and enrichment opportunities for our students. And we also partner with the city of Oceanside to have four school resource officers support all of our schools. Next slide, please. The school resource officers within the Oceanside Schools strive to be an additional resource to our students, staff and families. They do this by focusing on providing a safe learning environment for all, fostering positive relationships with youth. And developing strategies to resolve problems affecting our youth, both in the community and in our schools. The role of the school resource officer can be defined as a triad, including part educator, part mentor. And part law enforcement officer. Next slide, please. Here are a few documented benefits of having school resource officers working in our district. If students have access and familiarity with an officer, they are more likely to report being the victim of a crime to police. Second, officers are able to get an understanding of safety concerns within the community. And because the school resource officers are trained and experienced to work with the schools and youth. School sites are able to work collectively, collaboratively to overcome issues that come into our school sites. One recent example is a non-student that jumped over a fence onto a district campus. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Dieter, before you move on, can you go back to that last slide? Is this, is this research based on, it says research at the top, does that mean it's like we have statistics and data that. Or go with this, or is this more observational about our district services?
These are reasons to have. Officers within schools. I can get some of the sources for you where this information came from. Sure, and provide that to the board.
That was sort of my question as well, when you talk about reduction in nine eleven calls. This was done during the past year?
The, this isn't statistics, these are over, these are overall reasons, they aren't Oceanside-specific reasons. And those reductions in nine-one-one calls really are about being able to have a collaborative partner. Within the schools that may, that is, is knowledgeable about, about juveniles. Knowledgeable about the school system and can collaboratively work to. To produce outcomes that are more positive than they would be if we were just calling into the dispatch center. And getting an officer that may or may not have that same level of understanding about our system.
Thank you.
True, true. During the school year, our team, our school resource officer team comprises of four school resource officers. Here are the officers that have been a part of that team this year. Our newest member who's just coming on at this current moment is Officer Jamal Daniels. Officer Daniels attended Oceanside Schools from elementary school through high school. Prior to becoming an officer, he has years of experience in working with youth at rec centers. He has a master's degree. We also have Officer Luke Rubish, he has been on loan to us from the neighborhood policing team. Officer Rubish has a bachelor's degree and has been a great addition to our, to our team. I, I think I messed up on that, Officer Daniels has a master's degree, if I said bachelor, so I'm sorry for that part. Additionally, we have Officer Tiffany Ryder. Officer Ryder was a teacher for ten years prior to become, prior to becoming an officer. She holds a master's degree and a teaching credential. She is also bilingual with French as her additional language. Also, as a member of the team, we have Officer Eddie Reyes. He is a Marine Corps veteran, he is bilingual with Spanish as his additional language. He works with the Oceanside Police Department Training Team India, which includes work and de-escalation strategies. As our last member, we have Officer Marcus Wood. He was born on Camp Pendleton, graduated from Oceanside High School. Has worked many years, worked many years as a football coach at Oceanside High School, has a bachelor's degree as well. As you see, these officers don't hesitate to reach out and say hello. Next slide, please. Here are some statistics for our school resource officers in the Oceanside Unified School District. For the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. During that time, five students were issued citations for truancy and returned to school. Six students were referred to diversion. Diversion is a program involving North County Lifeline and the Oceanside Police Department. Where behavior is addressed through a restorative approach instead of an approach that relies on legal sanctions. During this time, our school resource officers made no student arrests. At this time, I'd like to pass.
Before you, before you pass it, you said no student received and was arrested. But you did issue citations, what becomes of the citation, is there a record kept of the student?
The, um, the school does not keep a record of that. And my understanding of those juvenile records is that they are at that point. A sealed piece of information, but I can get more information from our police officials. On exactly what happens when that type of a citation is issued.
Right, I, I would imagine pirate would be reported to SARS, but. Again, if, if a citation is being issued, it does go somewhere. So you're saying if we're not keeping it, then the. Police Department is keeping it or what?
That, that would be as far as what happens with those juvenile records and, and from that, that police. Position, that's something that I don't have exact information about, but I can get that information for everyone.
I also have another question regarding the school resource officers, they all seem to have exceptional. Credentials, but I'm curious in terms. Are they on loan to us, do they work for us? How do we, do we share them with the Oceanside Police Department?
So they are sworn officers within the Oceanside Police Department. And they apply to be school resource officers. And they apply to be school resource officers. The way that that works is there's a portion of the salary that's paid by the school district and a portion of the salary that's paid by the city of Oceanside, by the police department. And there is, the, the police department does pick who those officers are, but they take that job very seriously. And the credentials that we saw with these sets of officers are not unique to this year's group or this, this, this group this time. Those are, those are the type of officers that will be coming to us in this program. But they do work for the Oceanside Police Department first and foremost.
What is the rotation then? Because if you're saying that, that they get selected and they, this is the group currently, what is the, the the timeframe? So is it something that they look to stay on? Because I know I've seen a couple of these officers on our school sites, and they've been there for some time. So they have a connection with our families and our community, obviously. So is it something that they rotate through, or is it something that this is where they want to stay? And so they're here two years, five years, ten years. What's the timeframe?
Correct. It's, it is a two-year minimal commitment. And a lot of officers choose to stay for, for years longer than that. But the, so, so routinely, we do see officers that have, that have a far greater connection than those, than those two years.
Just to pick up kind of where Raquel was asking to, I would like us to think about, and moving forward, to make sure that we have a strong voice in the officers that are on our campuses, since it is a shared contract. Every, all the ones of our officers that I've met are professional and they've been great stewards, as far as I could tell with my interactions. But I, I think it's important that we note that this is an out, outside organization and, and they have kind of a select two, two people that they're working for, essentially. Are school resource officers permitted to search students?
If there were that probable cause scenario, they would be. When we have something like that, the probable cause maybe would be like weapon-related type things. But they would have the ability to do that.
Do we have a strict protocol for notifying parents that a student was searched or seized by one of the SROs?
We do have strict protocols for notification when a search takes place on our campuses. Absolutely. It's in board, board policy.
And if a student had a complaint or a concern about school resource officers, where would they take that complaint to? Would they go to a teacher? I, I only ask because it is a unique situation, because they are not within our organization as an employee. So there's a, a usual direct line of, you know, where a parent would bring that concern to. So I, I guess, where would that go?
Well, one, one thing that we have within board policy also is the recognition of them falling into a category that's known as a school official. So they do, our SROs do fall under that category. So they would be, they would follow that normal process and investigative line of any other type of a complaint. And there isn't a way, just like, there isn't a way for a student to receive assistance with, with a variety of, of needs. But any of those reported places, whether it were to an administrator, to a teacher, to a counselor, through the more formal places, like a uniform complaint or something like that, those would be investigated and taken to the, to the, to the point necessary for completion.
I think, I think I would just ask that we consider creating a specific norm or a specific space for that. Only because the power imbalance that can be perceived with somebody who is a law enforcement official, especially if, you know, a student's family has experienced difficult situations with, with law enforcement in the past. I just worry about making sure that the students that all feel safe and that they have a safe place to express whether, you know, if they do not. So I, I guess that's, it's just like an informal request that we consider that. Since they're classified as school officials, does that mean they do anything with discipline? Are they working in the disciplinary?
They would not be saying any kind of, the, the only, like, the school administrators are the people that would determine those higher levels of, of discipline. And it wouldn't be an officer's role to do any portion of that. If there were something that went into the world of, 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 of a criminal type offense, they wouldn't be doing the discipline end, but they may do the police policing end.
Right. So Mr. Swank, let me jump in here. Your Joyce, one of the things that, having been a site administrator for a long time, one of the things that we wanted to continue is for students to know primarily that school is the safe place for the students and that their number one ally and advocate is always the administrator. Again, fifteen years as a site leader, I had students come to me with all sorts of things. And that continues to be the way it is. Our, you know, we have a really strong administrative team at all of our schools. Our SROs predominantly work with our secondary students. And so we do try to keep that way. And I've actually also coached across this county and in many high schools and many times run into SROs who, they do not do the search. They have a much higher threshold to search than a school official does. That's, that is actually the law. But to explain this a little better, I have Sean Marchland from OPD who can explain some of these questions. So would you please turn your camera on? And if we could have you talk with our board, thank you.
Good evening. This is Sean. I must have misspelled my last name, Sean Marshand with the Oceanside Police Department. That's, I'm sorry, I was typing on my phone. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
The first question we had was about searches and the obligation of the police versus administration.
Well, if, as far as searches goes, we, we need to notify the parent in a school setting. We can't just go ahead and search, search folks, not carte blanche without notification of the parents. That may not happen prior to the search, depending on the circumstances. Mostly safety. Well, it would be entirely safety reasons, to be honest with you.
Thank you. And then the other question we had was around the citations for truancy. I understand that there's a difference between whether it was an elementary student who might rely on parents to get to school, it might be challenging. But we have the statistics you see on the screen about the five students who are returned to school with the truancy. What happens to those records or what happens to the citation? What is a citation actually? Probably even a better question.
A citation is essentially a documentation of what, what would be technically an arrest or detention or an infraction. In those cases where it's truancy, that is used basically as leverage for a diversion-type program. And with a diversion program, that criminal record doesn't exist because there's no prosecution that takes place.
Great. So this is a way for students to be able to be part of that diversion type of program? In that, could they be eligible without the citation?
There, there's really no, nothing to be in diversion for at that point. Because no, 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 I hate to use the word criminal because in, in the big, big scheme of, of crime, it's, it's very, very minimal comparatively. Overall, I, I also heard some concerns about the selection of some of our, our folks. I, I, if I could have an opportunity to speak to that, I'd be more than happy to.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So we at the police department understand the relationship that we have with the Oceanside Unified School District. Moreover, the connection that we have with the community through the youth that attend that. So we are very, very particular and selective in who we, we select for this position. It's a position that not everyone is suited for. And we are, like I said, we, we, we are very careful about who we select and what their motivations are. We look for folks that have some type connectivity to the community. Perhaps they have come from some type of diverse background. They have a history in education prior to law enforcement. And really, everybody who participates in our school safety enhancement team, their focus isn't on arresting kids. It's on safety in the school setting at all times. It's hard to really quantify. I know that, that there was a desire for some statistics, but it's hard to quantify the benefit of having, we, we have had crimes reported to us by students that would not have likely otherwise been, been reported because they see these folks every day. They have a, they have a connection there. And, and we don't have like stone-faced officers in there. We have people who are actually interacting with staff, interacting with students, and, and, and very participative in, in the school setting. I'd also like to speak briefly about the, the employment piece. I know there seems to be some confusion or, or concern again. While our school resource, resource officers are employees of the city of Oceanside and Oceanside Unified has a contract and they're contract employees with Oceanside Unified. Ultimately, they are police officers. So as such, if somebody wants to report a complaint, there's actually probably more venues to do so. If we have a school resource officer that has a complaint reported to us, we will immediately get with the safety team with OUSD and ensure that there is some transparency there by, hey, we have a student, we have an issue. And, and we would do what would be necessary to mitigate that issue. If that student made a similar complaint to school staff or administration, my hope is that you would let us know, so we can also intervene and, and preclude any further, hopefully a misunderstanding. But if there's some type of violation of policy or law, we do not tolerate that type of behavior, and we would ensure that that wouldn't, that would not continue.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you clarifying that for us here. I know definitely, for me, one of the things I've worked in schools that have SROs and those that do not, and one of the benefits that I've seen is around the fact that when you have that ongoing relationship with your SRO, when you do have a challenge or you do have something that comes up, you have someone who is trained specifically to work with youth, who are like children and want to be with kids. And it's always been in there, it's really great to have that ongoing relationship. Because if you do not have an SRO connected, then you would have whatever police officer happens to be available, whether they've had training for working with youth or not. So we appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And I, I don't want to speak too, I, I have a tendency to speak too much. So if you have any other questions, I'll be, I'll be available through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I think our concern is that we really want to break the cycle of students going from the schoolhouse to the jailhouse. So this was very informative. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. And, and in that regard, I think that, I would like to think that we're aligned in that, in that manner. We, we don't want to see that any more than anyone else.
Thank you, Sean.
Absolutely.
So the only, the only thing left from, from our end, my question would be is if we could get some data sur, on a survey of the students' perceptions, I would just love, we're doing, we have lots of great survey data tonight. So a survey data on students and families' perceptions. And maybe that, that could be brought back this summer and we could have a full conversation. I want to say there was a bill passed through legislature that required us to have conversations about this. But I'm gonna have to check my ledge tracker. I don't remember if it was signed or not. So I thank you so much, Sean, for being here, and I have to speak directly to some of those concerns.
Trustee Joyce, could you just take a moment and just, what would the, what would the question be? Just people's perception of officers in the schools? Or what was your thought on the survey type question?
Yeah, so perceptions of school resource officers, how frequently they may interact with them, range of experience when interacting with school resource officers. Again, it would just be good to have the positive data back up some of the, the great testimonials that we've heard from community members about school resource officers in the school setting. It's just, I would like to hear student voice when we talk about something that's so directly related to their personal experiences on a day-to-day basis.
I think one of the questions might be, do, do students feel safer? Do they feel safe speaking to the SRO, et cetera? We can work on that offline. I'm sure Mercedes, Dr. Lovey can help out with that.
Yeah, we're definitely thinking about that. Thank you.
All right. Pass it on here to Dr. Sparks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dieter, and thank you, Dr. Lovey and Officer Marchand. One of the things I wanted just to add real quick is we administer the California Healthy Kids Survey on a yearly basis. Some districts do it every couple of years. We do it yearly in Oceanside, and we're able to add questions on to that survey. So there's an opportunity for us to do that as well. So good suggestion. Thank you for that, trustee Joyce. All right. Take a breath. We're gonna shift a little bit and talk about connection engagement specifically through the lens of what has been occurring the past twelve to fourteen months. What we know is that the pandemic and its challenges, the exacerbating of inequities, that OUSD is not immune to the challenges that we read about and hear about on almost daily basis regarding students experiencing substantial amounts of disruption to their daily academic routines and their daily learning. Our response to this has really been focused on three tenants. And the first one is engagement. We want students to want to be here. That there is excitement, that there's reason, and that there's purpose. This was true in March when we pivoted to virtual learning over a year ago and is true today. We want them to feel connection, that they are connected through either wifi, through tools, or through relationships. And we want them to feel and experience intentional support, that when they disconnect or disengage, that someone has their back. Some of the ways that we've done this over the past fourteen months has been through a family engagement study team process, which Dieter will share more about in a few minutes. Looking at our no-show and drop lists, so any students who are on a no-show list or a drop list, we filtered those a number of times, combed through them to conduct home visits on a regular basis, both through our team here and Student Services, our partners such as TC and also our assistant principals at the school sites. Our twenty-plus absence list, so any students who are hitting that threshold of what the state calls chronically absent, those are students who we reach out directly to, either through calls, mailings, or home visits. And positive attendance improvement calls has been part of our process as well. Any students who had attendance issues before and have improved, we reach out directly to them to celebrate the fact that they've been showing up to school, whether virtually or in person, on a more consistent basis. And we've enhanced our accept and, and made our attendance procedures more accessible to comply with SB ninety-eight, which is the Senate bill under which we've been operating during distance learning. And so we understand that there's still challenges that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. We still have, you know, a chronically absent student population that we continue to work at. And it has been as low as nine percent over the past couple of years, and we're continuing to work at that rate on a regular basis. Next slide, please. As a result of the three themes, home visits have connected families to school resources, like the expanded enrichment program. Several visits have also connected students to needed food, clothing, counseling, mentoring, and ongoing support. And the root of our visits is to start a partnership with the family. We recognize again that the pandemic and its challenges have exacerbated a lot of inequities and that we're not immune to those in OUSD. Just this year alone, we've conducted over four hundred in-person home visits. We, since last year, when schools pivoted to virtual, we were able to contact and connect with ninety-nine point nine percent of our students between March and the end of the year. And since March of last year, we've maintained an average of ninety-seven percent. And since March of last year, we've maintained an average of 97% attendance. One of the things you see on your screen here is this information that we typically leave with families, both in English and Spanish, whenever we do a home visit. And what it does is it shows families, students, parents, caregivers, and guardians, what types of support is available to them, whether they need tech support, whether they need resources, and who to reach out to at the district office, especially if they're struggling with attendance. Next slide, please. Dieter's gonna talk a little bit about the way that we intervene when students begin to miss school. Go ahead, Dieter.
All right. Thank you very much. Our connection and engagement process was created to support students and sites during virtual instruction. And the outreach approach or shift will go beyond this pandemic year. As we will continue to emphasize increasing school engagement through building a family, school, and community partnership, building upon connection rather than compliance. Our personalized outreach efforts began, began as soon as, as a student has missed three days in a given week. Our initial outreach efforts include office attendance personnel reaching out to families and encouraging teachers to make personal calls to check in, all the while we look to connect students to resources that will lower the current barriers to regular school attendance. Next slide, please. This slide outlines this approach a little further. Each school site has done extensive work to engage students with school. When the family continues to struggle, we are using an approach we call the Family Engagement Study Team. This approach is a shift from a school attendance review board method to focus on a collaboration identifying challenges and barriers with families. And now, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Sparks.
Thank you, Dieter. Go on to the next slide, please. One of the other things we recognize in Student Services is that the connection and engagement does not begin and end with the student only, but it also includes the family and the community, the parents, the caregivers, and the guardians. To that end, we have an awesome member of our team, Deb Wickman, who is a teacher on special assignment and is also our family and community engagement TOSA. Part of her work in, in collaboration with the Student Services Team and other partners across the district and in the community has been to lead 11 parent guardian caregiver academies, 18 parent guardian caregiver sessions, with over 400 participants attending. Another great opportunity we had this year was to partner with our local Chamber of Commerce, where they were able to provide during the height of the pandemic, over $40,000 worth of gift cards to local grocery stores and restaurants, which we were able to put directly into the hands of families during food distribution or home visits to support not only the families, but also our local businesses. This is some of the great work that team has done around family and community engagement, thanks to Deb Wickman. I now am excited to introduce to you and bring to you Ms. Maisha Wiggum, who will talk a little bit about our expanded enrichment and secondary learning centers. Maisha?
Thank you, Dr. Sparks, the board, and Dr. Vitale for having me. Oceanside has an existing partnership with ARC, ASAP, the Boys and Girls Club of Oceanside, STAR, and my partner Marissa Crawford to provide before and after-school enrichment for students. Each program offers unique enrichment opportunities to engage students through self-exploration, tutoring, and mentorship. This year, our before and after-school providers played an important role in Phase 1 of our reopening plan by shifting their expertise in after-school programming to provide in-person academic support during virtual learning for our at Promise and children from essential worker families. Next slide. The EEP and SLCs have maintained steady enrollment since opening in August. Our providers modified their traditional method of providing extended learning opportunities for students to deliver in-person academic support and enrichment opportunities. They developed engaging program plans, hired additional staff, and adjusted their hours of operation to support students during the school day. To support our providers with the transition from a before and after-school model, our team engaged in extensive discussions and training to ensure all students have access to the program. To ensure equity, students that are identified as foster transitional receive free and reduced lunch, and children of essential worker families had first priority to enroll in the program and are among the 1,100 elementary and secondary students participating in the EEP and SLCs. Next slide. The pandemic created an even greater need for additional resources and support for our foster and transitional students. We identify students that are foster and transitional through referrals from the County Office of Ed, our school liaisons, referrals from community organizations, and self-reports from families that complete the transitional affidavit. Our partnerships ensure that we provide social emotional support and resources for students and families to stay connected within the school community. Next slide. Thank you. Ensuring equity and social emotional support of our students are top priority. Our onsite school liaisons provide support for our 58 foster and 53 transitional students to ensure they have the adequate resources to be successful in school. We have partnerships with the County Office of Ed, Shop With The Cop, Assistance League, Promise To Kids, and others to provide backpacks and school supplies, clothes and shoe shopping events, and bus passes for students that need transportation to and from school. As the district coordinator, I collaborate with the county on updates and resources available for our school liaisons and foster transitional students. The county provides monthly professional learning opportunities for district and school liaisons to engage in discussions on ways to identify and report foster and transitional students. We also support our students by providing access to technology and free wifi, wifi hotspots to increase their engagement in virtual learning, doing home visits, and facilitating referrals for community-based organizations that provide wraparound services with food, housing, and individual or family counseling. Right now, we're looking forward to our next event sponsored by the Assistance League for 55 of our foster and transitional secondary students to shop at, for school clothes at Kohl's next week. We recognize that these numbers only reflect our active students in the district that identify as foster and transitional and does not take into account unreported foster and transitional students or students and the care of family members. However, we will continue our outreach and support at the site and district level to ensure we are connecting with our foster and transitional families and providing resources to ensure their success. And now, I'm gonna pass it back to Dr. Sparks.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Hi, okay.
Okay. I, earlier during our meeting, I heard that art was being dropped by the district or something to that effect. It was kind of devastating. So, the fact that you're involved with the Boys and Girls Club was stated earlier that art was not, was going to not be one of the.
We have a great partnership with our ARC providers. And they are currently serving students at Chavez Middle School in our SLCs.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. You got the clarification. Okay.
Go ahead.
When we, because we're talking about our foster and our transitional students.
Yes.
I have a real passion with these families only. And so, when we're talking about, you did mention that there are those that are not identified. What do you mean by not being identified or because they're, I guess, not listed as foster? And I know I've, I've talked to Jordi before about it and the difference of this. And I, I, I need clarification. I think our families need clarification because I, I'm not sure exactly what we need to do because there, there's a lot of foster within our community. And they're, and what we, and so we, I think we need to clarify for them of what needs to happen so that they get the services that they need and that they're getting the support that they need. Because I, I think we miss a lot of the families within our community. So, can you explain a little bit about that, please?
Yes. We identify students that are foster and homeless. Number one primarily is through reports that families make to the schools. And by completing the foster affidavit, that gives us the information we need to pass on to our, our foster transitional liaisons. They are the ones that are on the ground, making those connections with our students. And we are fortunate enough to have them at every school. We also have a good relationship with the San Diego County Office of Ed, who also refers students that are foster and homeless to our district so we can immediately start providing services and support to students. Another way that students are identified as foster is through court orders that are then shared with each school site. We do recognize that some students that do classify as foster and homeless go unreported because they don't fit into the guidelines of either being declared foster students by the court, but they are living in the custody of a close family member. And in those situations, we do our best to provide some of the resources that we have available for our foster students, like access to our expanded enrichment programs or bus passes, our free and reduced lunch. Those are other indicators. But with our, our site liaisons, we really work with them to identify other indicators that would, that they need to be aware of, that would give us insight on whether a student is experiencing being a transitional student. So, it's really about building those relationships. You're having conversations with the site administrators and teachers. And we're checking in with kids, like Dr. Sparks, Sparks says, we're asking kids, how are you doing? You know, how are things going at home? What resources do you need? Reaching out to the families. So, we're doing everything that we can on our end to make sure that we're making connections with our students and families to ensure that they have the resources that they need. But a lot of our, our foster and transitional students sometimes go un, under-reported. Another indicator that was shared with the county is by looking at our free and reduced lunch population. So, about 5%, 5% to 10% of our students that receive free or reduced lunch may fit into the category of foster and, and foster and transitional students. Our numbers this year are, are uniquely different because all of our students in the district are receiving, are participating in our school nutrition program. So, those are just ways that we are doing our best to identify and support students that are foster and transitional.
A student, is it true that a student could be identified as transitional if they live in a multifamily home?
Yes, yes. We, in our district or in, in our county, our indicators are more flexible than, than other organizations' indicators. We do doubling up. We count that as a category. We, any student that does not have a fixed residence would be classified as a transitional student. But we do know that other community organizations use different indicators to measure how many students or how their transitional population is measured. But for our district, we do count doubling up in students that live with family members in our numbers.
I was just gonna point out, I, I'm really interested in making a plan for fleshing out these numbers because the numbers, you know, they translate into the resources for the kids because they bring in additional funding for each child.
Yes.
From both the federal and the state level. So, I'm really interested in making sure we get this righted for next year, especially because I know that we can't affect the numbers for this year. But those are lost resources when we are not able to attain those numbers fully. So, I, I definitely look forward to working over the summer with the staff to come up with a really robust plan for finding and making sure that our kids are getting what they need.
Yes. And according to our CalPads numbers, they include our active and inactive students because we know that the students transition over time. So, they capture our students that identify as foster and homeless for the year. But in my presentation, I captured the students that are homeless, that are transitional liaisons, are actively supporting at our school sites. So, it's the 58 homeless, sorry, the 58 foster and the 53 transitional. Those are the students that are at our sites and our liaisons are actively connecting and building relationships with.
Okay, so, so in, in having that communication, so are we gonna be able to reach out to our families differently that are lost in that, in that conversation, that are, are not listed as foster the right way? Or, or we're missing the gap somewhere on how they're, how they're in our system? Because I know, like, and I know Dr. Sparks and I have talked about, because I know with my foster, it's, he's a foster, but he's not listed as a regular foster, so he doesn't receive the services the way a, a foster would within our district. And I don't, and I don't remember all that and how it all works exactly at this moment. But to those that are informal, even within our, our community, reaching out to those so that we can support them because the communication doesn't always go out to them. And so, we look at even our transitionals, and I was talking with somebody recently, that there's a lot of transitionals out there, but the fear of communicating and not feeling comfortable with coming and communicating to our, to an administrator or to a counselor or to anybody, but still wanting to be able to give them the services. So, if there's a way that we can communicate, even to the community as a whole, to reach out to those families, is there something that we can do or to work on something over the summer or even starting now so that we reach out to them and give them the support that they need, even through the summer, through when we're getting ready to go back to school? But so that we have those communications now and in place. So, as we're going and finishing out this school year, the students that are within our district know that we're here to support them and that we're here working with them and there's no fear or shame in, in whatever need that they have. So.
And I agree. And we definitely can do more outreach. And especially when, as we get our students over the summer to do our learning enrichment camps. And over, in, in the fall, we know that families' living circumstances have changed, you know, during the pandemic. So, it's even more of our responsibility to make sure that we're communicating with our school community to make sure that they are aware of the resources that we have available for our students. Like Dr. Sparks has shared, our community has been amazing with supporting our families with the $40,000 and gift cards were great. Our school lunch programs, meal programs were great. Those are other opportunities for us to connect with our community to let them know that we do have resources for students and families in need.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maisha, and thank you to our board members for following up with questions about ways to support our students who are experiencing, you know, being transitional, but also in, in, in foster as well. So, great suggestions and we are taking notes on those suggestions for sure. So, thank you for those. I want to, if you could advance to the next slide, please. I want to kind of round out our presentation this evening. Believe it or not, yes, it's, it's coming to an end. We'll still entertain questions to talk a little bit about restorative practices and restorative places, which have been probably one of the top priorities of our Student Services Team, our Educational Support Services Staff, and by that way, our district leadership. We talked about the mental health. We talked about the mental health ecosystem and all the partners and practices and people that are part of that. And now we want to share a little bit, just a little bit snapshot of what the impact of that mental health ecosystem. Has has yielded. Focusing on how we are fostering equitable, inclusive and affirming learning environments. So we're going to talk a little bit about restorative practices, which is in short, a non punitive. Get accountable way to approach student interaction and student discipline. Next slide, please. So a few years ago, three to four years ago. We made, we we set goals in our department and Student Services Department. At a high level to decrease our overall number of suspensions and to decrease the number of expulsions. We did this because we were coming out of a zero tolerance policy time. And we were shifting towards restored or practices approach. And our goal was twofold, to reduce the suspensions and expulsions. But also specifically to reduce them amongst categories and demographics such as. Black and African American students and our Hispanic and Latino students. We recognize that we were not a stranger to the national trend. Even the trustee Evan spoke to earlier with a school to prison pipeline and we wanted to disrupt that. And so this is something that we've been working on intentionally over the past couple of years. And so I'll share here, just from the twenty seven eighteen to the twenty twenty one school year. We've had a ninety nine percent decrease in overall suspension events. Some of that is attributed to the learning being virtual during the pandemic. But still fewer than surrounding school districts, even this year in virtual learning environments. Just to kind of snapshot that away from the pandemic year. From twenty seventeen to twenty twenty seventeen eighteen school year to nineteen twenty school year. We had a seventy eight percent decrease in overall suspension events across all of our schools. Specifically, as we look down into some of our demographic data, which we set goals for. We had an eighty one percent decrease in overall suspensions for students who identify as black or African American. We also had a seventy eight percent decrease in overall suspensions from twenty seventeen eighteen to nineteen twenty for our Hispanic and Latino students. I have to stop and just recognize the incredible work of our intervention approaches of our assistant principals and our counselors. They've been a huge part of helping us get to a more restorative place through restorative practices. Our expulsions, we had eleven expulsions in the year eighteen nineteen. We had two in the year nineteen twenty. We've had zero since. And that's an eighty two percent decrease in the expulsions from our district. We've set up alternatives such as alternatives to expulsion, alternatives to suspension. And again, we've had over five hundred of our staff members across the district that trained in restorative practices formally. And we'll continue that approach over the next few years. We also believe that these decreases have come about because we've engaged in those social emotional learning lessons. And we've been intentional about leading unconscious bias workshops, which we know that bias informs expectations in classrooms. And if we can disrupt some of that, we can disrupt some of the data that we had a few years ago to where we are now. Next slide, please. We recognize though that we still have significant work ahead, especially as we are returning to in person learning environments. Just this year from October twenty twenty, students across the county were surveyed. From our county office of ed around what is on their minds. And specifically, you'll see here that students range from mental health concerns being on their minds to distance learning being a challenge for them. Them experiencing isolation, COVID specific challenges, whether they may have been sick or have a family member or friend who were sick. Resources available to them or not available to them and the heightened racial inequities that we saw across our nation. And so all of the all of the work that we've seen with the mental health ecosystem and the work that we've done in our student services team. We recognize that there's still a significant amount of challenges and work ahead. Next slide, please.
Dr. Sparks, I'm sorry, could I have you go back two slides real quick before I lose the train? That first graph says suspension events by race and ethnicity. Could you provide us with this graph disaggregated by like rates within our district? So this is, these are actual numbers of suspensions, but like a rate per. Because when you compare these, we know we have, you know, far more. Hispanic Latinx students than we do black or African American. And so like comparing a one hundred and sixteen to a seven seventy five number is not as useful. I do like, I love that you gave us those percentages, but if you could have the rates. Per total students that identify into these race and ethnicity categories, that would be very helpful for understanding.
And they've also been very transparent with this data, this type of data in the LCAP process. Because we look closely at that on the LCAP to make informed decisions. So I've watched them bring this stuff up.
That's wonderful. And just since we're talking about it, another piece. Of accountability and transparency that we we love this board, I love that this board shares that as a top goal. Is creating these dashboards on a school by school basis. So when a when a parent goes to look and check out their school. They can see what suspensions look like at that school and not have to chase down that data at the state level or any other levels. Having some of these informations come to their to our parents instead of making them chase it would be great. And that's another future project.
Great. It's a great, it's a great suggestion and the answer is yes, we can pull that data for you. And I also would be remiss to to not mention that. The SD COE has recognized our reduction in suspensions and and expulsion. So we'll brag on our team just a little bit here, but yes, we will pull that data for you and we'll and we can share that with the board. Thank you. Let's go to the next slide, please. So in addition to the survey data that was shared from the county office of ed. This is countywide California Healthy Kids Survey summarized into a graph for seventh, ninth and eleventh grade students. Showing over the past couple of years, and this is kind of pre pandemic, things that were on their mind. Chronic sadness and suicidal ideation. And so I'm just sharing this with you all to say that we recognize and affirm the work ahead. And the challenges that likely have been exacerbated by the pandemic. We have these conversations forthright and outright with our counseling teams, our providing provider and partners that we've talked about tonight. And all of our admin. And so with a mental health ecosystem. That looks like care and mentorship and counseling and crisis support tutoring, problem solving, all these things we've talked about tonight. We are confident that we have the right people and partnerships and practices in place to respond to these ongoing challenges. And these lived experiences of our students as we continue towards reopening and in person learning environments. Next slide, please. So on behalf of Ms. Wiggum, Mr. Swank and our entire student services team. I would like to thank you all for your time and to our presentation this evening. And for supporting the great work of our team and creating the conditions to where all students can experience support, safety and success. With that, we will conclude. And if you still have questions, we are absolutely open to those. But we really thank you for your time. We're grateful to serve in Oceanside here. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I just want to compliment the team doing, I think, a very outstanding job. It was transparent, a lot of things you shared. I know that other districts probably would not have shared. It was informative, it was excellent, it was very well done and put together. And we're all looking forward to Oceanside progressing. So thank you again.
Thank you, trustee Evans.
Does anybody have any more questions for the team?
All right, well, I don't have questions. I do have a remark, though. I'm gonna second almost what Eleanor said. But you all know I'm a data person and I love the data. So I thank you all for the information. And just being open to accept our questions throughout the process of going over this presentation. I know it made it a lot longer with us breaking into it, but it just makes it easier not having to go back into it, you know, at the very end of it. So we were, you know, thank you for just being open to listening to questions as we went along. But again, just thank you so much for the data and I ask if you continue to share it. And if there's anything else that's out there that you can think of that that we need to change or do differently, please. Just continue on the path that you are because it's amazing. So thank you.
Yeah, I would just chime in the same thing. We respect the data that you guys put together. And it certainly gives us a framework for dealing with the next four or five or six items on the agenda, dealing with contracts with provider agencies and stuff. And it gives us that on the social emotional scale level and that softer support type delivery of services that we that we do. So thank you guys very much for that.
Yeah, they definitely built the context. So I'm going to move us along to item seven B. And so we're moving back into business. The approval of memorandum of understanding with the city of Oceanside for school resource officers for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three school year. Anyone want to speak to that?
Thank you, Dr. Begin. You had the information about the work of our SROs. This is an opportunity for a cost saving partnership between Oceanside Unified School District and Oceanside City. And your approval of this will approve the contract for two years to have four SROs available to our schools for those two years.
Super. Any discussion, questions?
I'm just gonna speak up because I am going to abstain from the vote. Because at this time, I don't feel like I have enough information. I would like a lot more information about climate and about. Students, understanding and all the things we talked about. So I am going to abstain from this vote. I just wanted to give that reasoning upfront.
All right.
Appreciate it. I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second it. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, motion carries four with one abstention. Got that. Let's move forward to item seven C, approval of the San Diego County Office of Ed. Countywide plan and OUSD updated plan for serving expelled students.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Begin. Again, this isn't a three year approval of the plan. The plan is written by SD COE. Currently, we have no students who are on the expulsion eligibility. But again, we want to make sure that we do have this plan available because it does provide for education for our students. Should they should a student become expelled? Obviously, we're hoping that does not happen, but it is a three year plan. And allows us to partner with SD COE to support students. So your approval of this will allow us to have the opportunity to serve students. Who might otherwise not have the opportunity to go to school should they be expelled.
Super. Do I have any questions for staff? All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Well, in light of the fact that we do not have any students on expulsion, I will second that.
All right, thank you, Eleanor. So we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Moving right along, seven D. Approval of renewal of contract service agreement with transformational consulting LLC.
Yes, this is for our contract for one year with transformational consulting. Dr. Sparks and his team are working on securing a grant that has paid for this for the last three years. We expect to be notified on whether or not we receive the grant by May. But this is to provide a one year contract, so we do not have a break in services. And then we will continue to seek out data and feedback from the community about these services each year.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, just briefly. TC is a is a group that's filled with people that are highly invested in our community. I've had the chance to see them in action several times this year, doing some home visits with them. And I just, I can't say enough how important they are in creating the long term relationships that we have servicing kids that struggle. But they know that their TC mentor is going to be on campus and they have this other person that they can go to. So I just want to speak to how valuable I've seen their role be during this really unfortunately difficult time.
Thanks for sharing. Great.
Well, I do have something still too. With in knowing and the support that they offer our students, they're mostly in our secondary. Levels of of education, so they're usually a junior in high school. But we know that a lot of the the needs start to happen in in the lower levels also. So is there a way to add to the service of being able to get them into the elementary for supports into that part of them? You know, and to getting them into elementary as well as middle and high. So again, just also seeing everything that they do and the connection that they have. They're usually the first, you know, out there because they have a different connection with the community as a whole. Not just with the students within our school, but with OPD, with SOS. And so they they're they're on the ground before anybody is usually, before anybody within the community knows what's going on. They're already dealing and helping with whatever the students, you know, within our district and their families might need. So looking to be able to have that connection starting sooner than later so that they have that mentorship. Because with a lot of the the things that go on with our families here in Oceanside. They they have that connection, not only just while the student is in school, but even after they've left here. So, you know, students that would never have gone to college, you know, wind up in colleges and and getting scholarships and. But still wanting to come back, you know, we have pro football players that are coming back and helping with nutritional services and handing out lunches, you know, but because of of TC. You know, so they're getting them to come back and still serve in our community because they have those lifelong connections. So I think if we can get them to support even at a younger and in. And in an elementary level, I'm wondering if that's possible. And then the next question is that can we, because I know we're looking at only doing it for one year. But if we get the grant, can we come back then and decide if it's going to be a three year at that point for these services that we're offering to go with the grant? We're paying with grant money.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez, I'll answer the second question first. Absolutely, we can definitely look at it this year. At next year at this time, when we would be renewing these grants as well, we would definitely look to see if we wanted to do a one year or a two year. We always have it at the discretion of our district of how long we want to establish our contracts. But considering we are waiting to hear about this, we thought it was most prudent to start with a one year for this time. So yes, that's absolutely an option. The other thing about TC is they do spend a great deal of time at the high schools, generally in the middle schools, generally because they're the larger schools. So it provides them more access to a larger number of students. But they do serve our elementary school students. They do, they have never turned away any school site requests. They go where they're asked to. So while they do spend a lot of time there, definitely, Dr. Sparks has assured me they do go to the elementary schools as well.
I guess the question maybe that Raquel raises is, is there an expansion opportunity here? To extend or add additional resources in this year's contract to the elementary level? You know, a half person or something to their team. And this is the first time I'm connecting that a grant is in the in the works, I guess, for them. So is that that's something new now and the grant then? And if we are successful with the grant. The general funds that we would are committing otherwise would be somewhat freed up. So there'd be some additional money to maybe extend to the elementary level. Am I off base there or is that possible? If the board desired that?
Well, we definitely would look into it. So what we'll do is we'll all have Dr. Sparks. Reach out to the school sites and to the principals and the teachers at those sites to see what might be the approach. And then let's look at a design and how that might work with our program. And we can report back to you on what that design and how it goes into the entire system that we have a support. So thank you.
And that LCAP committee looks at all the data, Mike. Looks at all the data from each one of these providers because they're all held accountable for what services they provide. So the LCAP committee looks at all of that to help make decisions moving forward and recommendations actually to the board. So we'll hear more.
What what is just the grants course? I'm sorry, I did, was it, I missed in the staff report or is it something new that just surfaced?
It's the same grant. Yeah, we've been using that grant. It's Prop forty seven. And we've used that grant for the last few years, but there is a gap in the funding. So you have to wait about a six month before you can reapply because it is a competitive grant. It's not a grant like an entitlement grant like Title One that or something like that. So we think we have a very excellent program. We have great data and we believe we will get that grant. But again, cannot commit until we do have the confirmation of whether or not we have that.
Did we pay for prior the prior year's contracts through that grant?
Yes, that's correct.
Through Prop forty seven? Okay, thank you. I missed that. Thanks.
And Dr. Lovey, you brought up a a plan, like a plan of action, almost like a system. Because there were a lot of supports that were brought up in that. And I can imagine how some of them overlap and the the services they provide are different. So you mentioned stuff like tier two, which not everybody in the school system may not know. It's it's more than what everybody. it's more than what everybody gets, but it's not so extreme that it's in tier three with our counselors doing tier three mental health services. Is that who we consider our tier three? That plan?
Generally not. We would refer the students for more of the tier three to therapeutic counselors. Or perhaps our psychologist. What we really feel is our counselors are more at that tier one, tier two level. And then again, when we start to get into more of a therapeutic, we'd be looking for, the training is different.
Okay. So that's my only concern. Just this is really kind of on the outside coming in, but if your tier two, tier three providers are temporary, they're not ones that our our students are going to know are going to be there for them next year, like our on-campus counselors, although our psychologists aren't. So anyway, just having that as a factor involved in what we make as a plan, the stability for those students that are that are experiencing those the most, I think is really important, whether that be TC or counselors that are going to be on the school site for a long time or wherever we go with it. I've just heard staff talk about how that stability means a lot.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, if there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the votes. Did we get a first and a second on that one? I think we did. Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the approval of the renewal of the contract service agreement with TC? Say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving on to seven E. Approval of inter-agency agreement with the San Diego County Superintendent of Schools for the PASS, that's P-A-S-S, AmeriCorps Gang and Violence Prevention Services. There's a mouthful. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you again. So this is another one of our service providers you heard about. These are young people who provide mentorship and guidance to students around goal setting. They are generally young adults who graduated recently from college, kind of a little bit like a Peace Corps, but a domestic Peace Corps. And what they do is they we pay a small stipend to each of them. We have fourteen members. And in fact, when I went to a training for Glisten for our LGBTQ plus students, several of our past mentors were actually in the training so that they could better meet the needs of our community. So I was able to meet a few of these young people. Really a wonderful thing for them to do and a way for, you know, our young people to be able to connect with someone who's just a little bit older and a little bit more experienced than they are. You know, oftentimes kids connect best with someone like that. So this is also another program that we're looking to fund with that Prop 47, should it become available. But until such time for the bridge funding, we want to continue that service because we do see the results.
I have a couple of questions with this. For for whatever reason, in this contract, when we read this contract, it reads like we're the contracting, not the contractor, and we're paying the the workers' comp and we're paying things like that. Why are we doing it for this group, but not for the other groups that we're trying to get to pass right now?
Right, we actually don't have to pay into it. What, because they do receive their paycheck, not from us, but from SD COE, it really does go back to SD COE. So we have not had a claim on from this group in the past, and so it's not likely. So I think it has something to do with the fact, and I can investigate more of the actual very technical part. It has to do with the fact that they are a like, how can I say, like a Peace Corps, right? So it's not a private, it's not a private group. It's a group that's funded by the government. And basically, we're just contributing a grant fund to it.
So if it's government, then why aren't they covering the workers? I'm just wondering, because if it adds more to than our workers' comp, so we're if we're covering that under us, wouldn't it add to our workers' comp? So we're dishing out more money than just what you're bringing to me right here, saying this amount of money that we're going to dish out to it. We're also covering them under our insurance, our underworkers' comp and our things like that. Why are we putting money out to that when it's just kind of if you're then we should be doing that for TC, we should be doing that for Palomar, but we're not. So what makes them different than these other groups?
Todd, do you want to speak to how workman's comp works? We had a bit of a discussion about that. Can you speak to that question at all?
Typically, the district will only cover workers' comp for our own employees. And we file through our, we work with an agency to file our unemployment claims. I'd have to read the contract on this one to see if it's different the way you're describing it. But typically, outside third-party vendors or other agencies that we go into partnership with, we do not pay for those costs for workers' compensation. They're covered by the employer who pays into the system. So unless there's a special arrangement with this, which I'd have to go in and see if there's some sort of legal language in the contract, we would not be on the hook for that. I've not seen that in the past for any of the outside agencies that we've worked with.
I think that's what's confusing because if you look at the contract itself, and you look under, even if you look in the compensation cost and repayment schedule, you look at the amounts that we're paying out and the way that it works and the the way that it's worded, it just, it doesn't make sense again, because none of the other entities that we're working with that we're doing have anything like that. And then we have a whole harmless. If we're working with a group that's working with our students, I have a real issue with having a whole harmless on a contract that we're looking, that we're the contractor, not the contractee. That they have a whole harmless on us that states and stipulates that, you know, that it's understood that at all times we're rendering their services described here and they're complying with any terms and agreement. OUSD is acting as an independent contractor and not as an officer, agent, or employee of SD COE.
Right.
You know, so there's a, there's I I don't know that we need to be that we can move forward unless we really actually look at this contract again and understand everything that's in it.
Is there an option to push this to the next board meeting and get more information on this?
Yes, we can absolutely pull the item. There would be no real issues with that. We're happy to bring
It won't impact services, right?
Impact services. We could bring it back in May and have that clarification. We believe it's because it's an SD COE contract, but let us get the actual answer and bring it back to you in May.
Okay.
County always loves to do that to us.
I do know that they have not billed us for any additional costs, just so you're aware of that. There is, and that has not been the case.
Okay. So are we all in consensus?
The motion then to to remove this until and put it off till next month until we get the data and information, questions answered, please.
Okay.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor of Raquel's motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we just made a new motion. So she always got her work cut out for her. So this Mercedes. All right, so we're moving on to item seven F, and we do have a public comment on this. This is the approval of contract service agreement with Palomar Family Counseling Services for school-based counseling.
Yes, so we contract with Palomar Family Counseling to provide at all of our elementary schools and our K eight schools and our middle schools to provide that therapeutic counseling through people who are getting their licensure for therapeutic counseling. These are all master's level students who are supervised by full-licensed professionals around their caseload. And this again would be Prop 47 until such time and to continue for one-year contract.
Do I have any questions, discussion? Because and then I believe we have a public comment from Lisa Turner. Lisa, do you want to join us?
Lisa, you can go ahead and unmute and we'll start your three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Lisa Turner. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and the executive director of Palomar Family Counseling Service. I just thought I would join tonight to let you know how we've been supporting and strengthening students all year through virtual counseling services. Primarily, but also with the spattering of face-to-face sessions as well. Our staff has been extremely flexible in trying to meet the needs of students and families by structuring their days in very creative and staggered ways in order to get students at all different times of day. A few things we've noticed this year is that the number one reason for referral has shifted. It's anxiety is the number one reason. Number two is family problems or family stress. This doesn't match what you would have seen in Dr. Sparks' presentation. That's because we updated our tracking mechanism since the first time we saw his presentation about a month ago. Anyway, but but that's that's current. Family stress is greatly increased. You all, you all know this. Financial strain that families are feeling, social isolation, and then just incredible pressure on parents who are doing remote work and then also trying to support their students with virtual learning, amongst many other issues. A silver lining of delivering telehealth services this year has been that we've had significantly increased family contact with parents, which has just greatly expanded our opportunities to help improve outcomes for the entire family and support the whole family. We're also seeing lately just both increased comfort with telehealth as well as an increased desire to get back to to get back to normal. But the bottom line, I think, is that telehealth is actually really working very well, even better than any of us anticipated a year ago. I'd like to share one example of a collaboration that happened actually in the fall when the middle schools were still completely virtual. At the request of counselors at King Middle School, a Palomar Family Counseling Therap- Counseling Service therapist created a group curriculum for boys and girls to address in a personal skill skills and building resilience and building connections. And the boys' group was called Fusion. The girls' girl girls' group was called Thrive. After a very productive and positive six-session series ended for sixth-grade girls, the girls took ownership of this group and decided they didn't want it to end. And they continued, they started the group on their own and they kept it going on their own, on their own platform. I know one girl took the time to email the counselor to thank her for allowing her to join the club, as she called it, and talked about how how much it helped her and it gave her a way to interact with others in which she didn't have it. And it was how easy it was to to be disconnected at home just on devices. This speaks, I think, to the to students' need for for belonging and connection at school. As Dr. Sparks referenced in his presentation earlier, we're really happy that we can support this. We are grateful for the continued partnership with OUSD and supporting social and emotional health of students through all of our programming, whether it's through this contract or any of the programs that we run through funding from the county of San Diego. We're very proud to be a part of the mental health ecosystem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa Turner, for your comments and for sharing that information. I'm going to turn to the board. Do we have any more questions or discussion?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll make a second. All those in favor of renewing this contract with Palomar Family Counseling? Say aye.
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 Do I have any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed. So four, one, motion carries. Moving to the next item, seven G. This is the approval of the 2020 2021 Safe School Action Plans.
Yes, so each and every year, we want to make sure that our schools create a safe school plan. It's a mandate, and our schools really looked at this very carefully. This is looking at school climate. So do students feel safe emotionally, psychologically? The physical safety of the campus. So are things safe on campus? Is there security in place? Are there hazards out of the way? And then the third part is how do we prevent problems that may occur with safety? So each and every one of our school sites prepared this, and so we would like to have the board accept these school site plans that were worked on by our school sites to address these three areas.
Any questions for staff? I'll make a motion to approve. The first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the 2020 2021 Safe School Action Plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Dr. Lovey. So we are at eight thirty right now. We need to take a ten-minute break. We've been going since six o'clock or even earlier. So we're going to take a ten-minute break. When we come back, we will be doing item eight. That's the COVID-19 reopening schools in-person instruction. So we will start back up at eight forty. So go take your biology break. So we will, um, start back up at eight forty. So go take your biology break. All right. I think our 10-minute break is up. Thanks for your patience. I'll wait for my other board members to join me. All right. We're still missing a few board members. Got Eric, Raquel and Eleanor will be joining us. We're moving on to item eight. It is eight A, COVID-19 reopening schools for in-person instruction. We're going to have a staff presentation. Uh, we can ask questions for staff, board members throughout the presentation. Um, then we have eight public comments and then we'll engage in a thorough discussion. So I'm going to turn it over. I'm assuming, um, to Dr. Lovey to start the presentation or Dr. Vitali.
Uh, I will start, Dr. Begin, and then I will promptly turn it over to Dr. Lovey.
All right.
Uh, so Greg Moon will go to, uh, our presentation. So this is an update on COVID-19, uh, along with our response and future recommendations. And that presentation will be up. There we are. And so, uh, previous board direction is noted, uh, on the next slide is that, uh, we return our elementary students and they did return uh, on March fifteenth to a split day hybrid, uh, in-person instruction model, uh, for four days per week. So that basically means that some students attend in the morning hours and some students in the afternoon hours. And now we've been in, in COVID time, uh, it seems like four years, but it's been one month, uh, that we've been in this model. Um, our secondary students returned, uh, March twenty ninth, um, to a hybrid in-person instructional model, and really they've experienced one full week of that. Then we had spring break and now we're on the second day of the second week of that model. Changes since our last meeting, uh, which was March ninth, um, is that we do now offer in-person hybrid learning, uh, at all levels. And I think the slides are just a little delayed, but it'll change. Um, so we do now have in-person, uh, hybrid learning, uh, at all levels. Uh, there's some new funding, uh, that has been, uh, allocated. And we're going to give you some updates on that, the difference between some state funding, some federal funding, how much we expect to receive, when we expect to receive it. And, um, uh, just some big explanations of how that money can be expended. Uh, we'll give updated information on the local case rates. I'm certain that people are aware that as a county, uh, we are now in the orange tier. Um, there were, uh, updated CDPH guidelines, which, uh, delineated, uh, information on sports testing and the number of observers that can be in various venues and recommended three feet of space between students. In addition, I think this was just last week, uh, that the governor announced that he expects that the end of, uh, our tiered system may end as soon as early as June fifteenth. So as we continue to move through this worldwide, uh, pandemic, we continue to put health and safety and educational outcomes as our focus. And from here, Dr. Lovey is going to share some, uh, uh, good news about students coming back that are, that's demonstrated in some pictures and then will give us the various updates as we move through to our recommendation. Dr. Lovey?
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. So we wanted to share, uh, some photographs of our elementary students, um, back at school in person. Um, some of our teachers, you can see students are hard at work. Uh, they're working on mathematics, arts, uh, they're working on shared reading and writing and just, uh, really enjoying being back. Uh, we have a next slide of our middle school students who are participating in outdoor athletics, um, being able to work with a teacher and again, really working on creating that, um, community in person. Next slide. And of course, we have our high school students as well, who've been able to, uh, re-enter sports, uh, competition and training, uh, continuing to work on achieving their graduation, uh, career and, uh, CTE goals. And it's been really great to see that happen. So next slide, please. Um, with those, that good news, we have more good news around the current situation for COVID-19. Um, currently, this is a slide that tells you about the current situation and the rate of spread of COVID-19 in our community. Um, this graph shows that anytime a, the spread is over one person, over number one, which is one person infects one person or more, that means community spread is actually increasing. As long as the number is below one, it is either decreasing or ma- remaining stable. So this is very good news and this, uh, graph is really a, a way to have all of these different important research groups come together for a, uh, reflection on what's happening. Next slide, please.
This is San Diego, right? Not specifically Oceanside?
That's San Diego County, yes.
Thanks.
This is also San Diego County, um, data. So this, uh, takes into play into consideration all the cities and unincorporated areas in San Diego County. This talks about hospitalizations, um, and the forecast. So if you see the dotted line in the middle, that's what has currently happened. And if you see the bluish turquoise line, you can see that the forecast of hospitalizations, which is a lagging indicator of COVID spread, is si- going down quite rapidly. At one point, we looked at this and we were up in the hundreds of hospitalizations in January and we're now at nineteen. So this is very good news about the hospitalization rates, um, in our specific county. Next slide. We also want to be looking at our county case rates and so you can see that, uh, we've held steady at five point eight per hundred thousand. Uh, we are now looking at, uh, the fact that in almost every one of the thirteen indicators, we see, uh, green, which means that we are within the tolerances set forward by the, uh, county health department for being prepared. And the other thing to look at is if you look at the testing positivity, number ten at two point five positivity, that means of all the tests that are given for COVID-19, only two point five of them are coming back as a positive case. So that's including both symptomatic and asymptomatic testing. So that's very good news. Next slide. This, uh, slide actually becomes the local data. So this is just for Oceanside, um, area, uh, Oceanside City. And so what you can see on April first, we had a case rate of a seven day with a three point three, um, case rate, which at one point this was, uh, over fifty. Um, and if you look in April seventh, we're at four point ten. Uh, statistically, this is pretty much flat. And so this is all good indication that we do continue to see, um, a stabilization and reduction in COVID-19 transmission, both local, both at the county level and at the local level. Next slide. So because of all of these things, we are now in the orange tier here in San Diego, uh, County. So with the orange tier, there are, uh, additional things that businesses can do to open up, um, larger capacity sizes and venues. Uh, we continue to have a, a lot of mitigation, which continues to be the universal masking. Um, and so those are things to keep in mind. As we do move forward, each of the tiers allow for different, um, businesses to open up in different ways. Next slide. We also want to make sure that we continue as we have had in-person learning. We've reminded families to make sure that, what, if your child has symptoms, they stay home, that they, uh, work to get a test so they can return to school as quickly as possible. Free tests are available for families and that we can make sure that our families are returning to school. This is available to all families, um, both in English and Spanish. You'll see the next one in Spanish. Next slide. As we know, we've had an opportunity in our county, in our state to have all educational employees vaccinated. That includes our substitutes, our student teachers, those people working in our EEP and second, and SLCs. And they are all eligible for vaccination. Next slide, please. And this is for our county. So if you look at our county, uh, we know that on the fifteenth of this month, all adults in California will be eligible to res- to sign up to receive a COVID-19 vaccination. And what's interesting on this data is if you look at this, uh, dashboard for our county on April fifth, uh, we had about thirty-eight point five, or it says thirty-eight point five residents who had one shot at least. By April twelfth, we're at forty-four percent had one shot. So at this pace, we really believe that by the beginning of May, we will be well over fifty percent of our population having at least one, uh, shot of COVID-19, which based on the latest research, there is some thought that even with one, uh, shot, that does help with some of the case rates and spreading. Next slide. We are also happy to say that we continue to provide a robust and expanded, uh, program. As, uh, Ms. Wiggum has shared with you, we have over a thousand students enrolled across all of our sites. Half of our schools have no waitlist for our programs. Of the schools that do have a waitlist, most have fewer than sixteen students waiting for a place in our, uh, expanded enrichment and secondary learning centers. And as we know, we continuously, uh, as we gain a capacity, we add more students in, or as families say, we don't need this, we again, add more students in. So that's, uh, one of the things that we want to continue to focus on and provide those services to families. Next slide, please. So as we're looking at this, we are definitely putting our thoughts forward towards summer programming. Uh, one of the things that we know is we want to make sure that after this year, uh, uh, challenges for our families and our students, that we provide a opportunity for them to learn, um, and one that will continue. So what we have in the works right now is to have over a thousand students at elementary and a thousand students in secondary school, with all sites having on-campus learning with both a three and a six-week option for a summer program. Uh, the reason we wanted to talk about a three and a six-week option is we know that both families and staff at times, uh, prefer to have a shorter session for the summer because it allows for family events to happen. So we wanted to make sure that more kids would be able to participate. Next slide, please. We will have a six-hour program at elementary. It'll be three hours of core and math and English language arts and a three hours of esteem of a camp enrichment that would be provided by our paraprofessionals in science, technology, engineering, art, music and physical education. The paraprofessionals selected for this will be paid and receive training in order to provide those services so that students could go to school, um, for a six-hour program in the summer. It was very exciting to us. Next slide. Uh, we all, yes, Mr. Joyce.
Uh, the core ELA and math instruction will be provided by a paraprofessional?
No, the core, the three hours of core, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that well. The three-hour core math and English language arts are provided by, uh, credential-certificated teachers. And then the three hours of STEM camp enrichment would be provided by our paraprofessionals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. We also are looking to have bridging programs and all students in the transitional grades would be eligible for the bridge programs that focus on building connections, the social emotional learning lessons that Dr. Spark talked about, helping students become familiar with the campus facility, thinking about study habits and making those connections. So for kindergarten, it would be a one-week program offered and for the rising sixth and rising, rising ninth grade, it would be a two-week program to allow them to have a nice firm start as they transition from grade to grade because we know those transition, uh, levels are so important to getting students started off on the right foot. Next slide, please. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Omen.
Thank you. I get to share the good news about how we'll be able to fund all of these different programs. I'm going to be going through three different funds, both state and federal, and then at the end, I provided a summary slide that will take all the information I'm sharing and put it in a nice little package at the end. The first one we're going to talk about is ABSB eighty-six legislation. That was enacted on March fifth of twenty twenty-one. It provides school districts and LEAs with $2 billion of in-person instruction grant, four point six billion in expanded learning opportunities grant. It provided state audit requirements, COVID-19 reporting and public health requirements and the prioritization of vaccines for our education staff. In the next few slides, I'll provide, um, I'll be focusing on the in-person reopening grant and the expanded learning opportunities grant. So this grant here, the two billion in-person instruction grant, it's also called the IPI grant. Um, districts must provide in-person instruction by April first. In-person instruction must be provided through the N- Districts must provide in-person instruction by April first. In-person instruction must be provided through the end of the school year. It's based on our LCFF formula entitlement and the amount that will be coming to Oceanside is just over five and a half million dollars. Next slide. The four point six billion expanded learning opportunities grant, also called the ELO grant, allows for flexibility with implementing learning recovery programs. It's also based on the LCFF formula funding entitlement. Eighty-five percent of the funds are for in-person support and instruction. Ten percent of the funds are to hire and retain paraprofessionals. Part of the eighty-five percent in-person support for instruction can be included there. And then fifteen percent can be used for distance learning or to prepare for in-person learning. The amount awarded to Oceanside is estimated to be at almost twelve million dollars. Next slide. To summarize, the two expenditure plans for ABSB eighty-six funds will be required by June first. Funds will be made available to districts in May and August. So we've not yet received any of these funds. And they will be available through August thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Now I'm going to be talking about federal funding. We have the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations acts. We don't call it curses so much, we call it S R two. So we've given this another name. The part of that that we'll be receiving in public education is elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. So you'll hear us refer to this as S R two. Again, they are federal dollars enacted on December twenty-seventh of twenty twenty. It's based on our LCFF formula entitlement. The funds will be available through September of twenty twenty-three. Our amount is approximately twelve and a half million dollars. We have not yet received these funds either. The first installment of S R two funds will be made available to districts in May, and they'll be starting off with twenty-five percent. So it doesn't come in one lump sum. It will be coming in different distributions just as AB eighty-six was coming in two different sets as well. Next slide. The American Rescue Plan. This is elementary and secondary school emergency relief. This is S R three. So we've gone over AB eighty-six, we've gone over S R two, now we're looking at S R three. This was enacted on March eleventh of twenty twenty-one. So it's also based on the LCFF formula entitlement. Funds will be available through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. This amount is a larger amount. It's almost twenty-eight million. Twenty percent of the LEA or the district's allocation must be used for learning loss mitigation, and that's approximately five and a half million. And in speaking with the county, they've not been notified yet as to when we will receive S R three funding. And so what are the different things that we've been asked? What can we use these for? There are different justifications is what we call them, or allowable expenses. When we're looking at our AB eighty-six, we're looking at cleaning and disinfecting classrooms, PPE ventilation, other school upgrades for health and safety along with staffing, and providing in-person instruction with social and mental health support. When we're looking at S R two and S R three, there are also similar components with that. We also have addressing learning loss in ways such as summer schools. All of the things that Dr. Levy talked about, those are things that we can fund through S R two and S R three dollars. Intervention programs, additional staffing, preparing schools for reopening, upgrading projects to improve air quality in school buildings. So those are just some examples of the different justifications that we can utilize for spending these dollars. So this last slide, I put it all together for you so you really have it at a glance. It's a lot to hang on to because we're still finishing up our timelines with our first allotment of funding as well, which we commonly just call cares. So these last three again are the S R two, the IPI grant, the ELO grant, and then S R three. And when you total these three funds up, it comes close to sixty million dollars. And that's all for the funding right now.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. So with that information, we have our staff recommendation with our transition to the orange tier. And all staff eligible for the vaccination and the other layers of mitigation that we have such as PPE, student partitions, our filtration system in every workspace, and our ability to keep staff, teachers, six feet from students. We are recommending that we move our elementary students from the transition of their current model to a five-day-a-week modified schedule to increase in-person time. And we would negotiate what that would look like with our labor partners. And our recommendation is, as I stated earlier, our secondary schools have been in this model for one week and two days. And we'd like to stay consistent with this current model as it seems to be working with the amount of in-person time that students have had as this is the first that they've been in school since last March. So with that, we're happy to take any questions on any of those items.
I'll open it up. Board members, do you have any questions for staff? You want to hear a public comment first? Okay.
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and do that. We have a total of eight public comments tonight unless that's right, Anne. And let's go ahead and pull them up. Anne, do you want to call them up?
Todd Madison. And then Hanyi Ballard. Allison Menew. Elaine Keswick. And then I'll come back and call.
Right. This is an important part of the evening, the public comments. So I just wanted, we're happy to receive comments about this item and other issues on the agenda. So thanks for signing up. Each person will have three minutes to speak. So I just wanted to remind people the rules. I know Todd, you know them, so. All right. We're going to set the timer and go ahead. You're up, Todd.
All right, thank you. So we appreciate the moving of elementary school to five days a week, but of course we prefer a full-time schedule as well as moving secondary to the same. We've seen all the timelines presented by the district on things that have been done to deal with the COVID crisis, but missing is the one thing parents have been clear on from the beginning, a plan for full-time reopening of in-person instruction. Last spring, we saw the district send out the last objective survey of parents we've seen in this entire year. The last survey to actually ask parents whether they wanted schools to reopen for full-time in-person instruction. The results of that survey were announced in the June ninth board meeting. Fifty-three percent of parents wanted to return to full-time. Fifty-three percent is not only a plurality, but a majority. The district and board, of course, ignored this. On July fourteenth, the petition signed by over five hundred parents urging the district to make a plan for full-time return was presented to our board. Ultimately, almost seven hundred signatures were gathered in support. The district and board ignored this. On July eighteenth, the group of parents rallied at MLK Park to demand that the district put together a plan for full-time return to school. The district and board ignored this. In August and September, we saw the waiver process introduced. Many parents spoke at board meetings asking the district to apply for these waivers. The district and board ignored this. In September, we saw districts with similar composition to Oceanside Elementary's, like Delmar Union reopen and prove that it could be done safely. The district and board ignored this. Last fall, in my board campaign, I stood on almost five thousand driveways and doorsteps speaking to thousands of people. During various board meetings during that time, I related the hardships of parents and kids were going through. Unlike our board, I had stood in front of them and listened to their thoughts. The district and board ignored this as well. Enrollment has dropped, which will impact future revenue. The district is not providing the education kids' parents want for their kids, so they're taking them elsewhere. The district and board have ignored this. We've seen unprecedented dollars flow into our schools, as we've just seen, at over almost sixty million dollars, plus another twenty million for kids that are not actually being educated. We've seen many millions spent, but still no full-time return. And lastly, over this time, we've seen hundreds of parents speak at these meetings urging the board to listen to them and do what is right for the kids. The district and board, of course, have ignored these parents, instead putting together a partial plan meant to placate its special interests rather than do what parents want, which is what we've seen again tonight. It's nice that elementary school is now on the path, just in time for the end of the school year, but what about secondary kids? We'd like to see you make right by your promise to judge and move quickly to fully reopen all of our schools to the greatest extent possible. Is tonight the night our district and board are going to stop ignoring parents and finally take action to do what parents want? I hope so. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Who's our next speaker, Anne? Hi, Jamie. You're up.
Good evening, board members. My name's Jamie. And while I only have one child at South Oak Elementary, my concern tonight is for kids in all ages at all schools in OUSD. I will admit, until last spring, when the schools were shut down, I did not pay attention to what goes on in school board meetings. I had naively assumed that districts operated within the boundaries of the law and always put what parents and students' concerns were first and always were looking out for the best interest of the students. And to say that my eyes have been opened is an absolute understatement. It brings to mind a comment or a quote by Maya Angelou. When people show you who they are, believe them the first time. And what I have witnessed in the decisions of this board over the last thirteen months has really shown me that I was mistaken, that the district had the interest of the students at the highest priority. In the beginning, we all freaked out with the data and it seemed like closing schools was a good idea. But over time, the data has shown that not only is it safe to be in school in person, but it actually does more harm than good. The state and county safety protocol requirements should have been an upper limit on making the decisions on whether we return to in-person. But as from what I have seen, the decisions made by this district, they always chose the way that kept the schools closed and kept the children home. It is my understanding, as a parent, we elected school board members to represent us as the parents. But as Todd had mentioned, when was the last time you sent a survey out to find out how we as parents felt, how we wanted our schools to respond to these changes in requirements by the health department? I've seen the board claim that they care so much about equity, but while they chose to keep Oceanside students home, families who are able to send their children to private schools have been, had the advantage of being in school in person much longer. The data is no longer in your favor. The restrictive protocols are no longer in your favor. And money is definitely in your favor. All of these excuses and hurdles that we've been looking at for the last year have been either greatly reduced or completely removed. Full-time in-person instruction, including lunches for all grades at all levels, anything less than that is unsatisfactory to me. And I will not be grateful that you will be returning to us our rights to education that should never have been taken from us in the first place. Actions speak louder than words. I'm done with the words from you guys. Take action tonight so that we as parents will remember this action when we put our votes in the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne, can you? You're up, Allison.
I'm trying to get my video here going.
We saw you. There you are.
All right. Good evening, board and Dr. Vitale. We are now one full year with minimal to no in-person instruction. Our parents are exhausted, juggling work, home tasks at hand, and having to be a school teacher to their children. We, the parents here at the Parent Association of Oceanside, are fed up with the school district's lip service. Sadly, the district and board have seemed to have ignored our children. From, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Seem to have ignored our children from the most vulnerable special needs. And all students in the district have suffered enough, struggling with anxiety, depression, and suicide, which have all skyrocketed throughout this entire school year. And if that weren't enough, we now see on national news that there was a teacher from a neighboring district bullying students in virtual learning. I trust that this is not happening in Oceanside, but let's get our kids back in school. It's not an issue, so that it does not become an issue. The science is clear. Students, teachers, and faculty can come back safely. And if we still continue to have parents and students afraid to come back to in-person instruction, then perhaps the board should instruct the district to educate their parents on the safety of schools and use science to show them that it's safe to come back. I am a parent of two young children and am saddened and upset that their entire school year has been robbed by a district that doesn't seem to have their students' best interest. And so now I will leave you at this and direct it to Dr. Vitale. We'd like to see you make right by your promise to the judge and move quickly and forward in reopening our schools to the greatest extent possible. It would be unfortunate if we were called back in front of the judge to explain why we didn't do what we said we would at our last hearing. Do what is right. Do what is right for our students. They are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Elaine. Hi, you're up.
Hi. Hi. My name is Elaine Keswick. My daughter Coral attends a special education preschool class in the district. I'm very disappointed this year the board did not include the new proposed schedules. This is a tiny population of students, but each student, including my daughter, is no less valuable. For this whole school year, I have been asking the district to consider the special needs of my daughter. Yet the district continues to ignore my daughter's right to a free, appropriate public education by fully implementing her IEP. Special needs does not mean more important needs, but simply that her needs are very unique because of her disabilities. Her needs require her to have an IEP, an individualized education plan. It contains specific accommodations and modifications, and even a unique class setting with a one-to-one aide in order to address these needs. They are needs that are a result of a rare chromosomal duplication called Duke fifteen Q. She is the one in ten thousand to fifteen thousand, my rare bear. Her needs make it so that distance learning is not appropriate. The virtual learning classroom was overwhelming, confusing, and nearly impossible for her to attend to beyond a few seconds here and there. It was the equivalent to her not receiving any education for so many months. I will say again that this has nothing to do with her teacher. It is just the reality of Coral's needs trying to be met by an inappropriate form of teaching and learning. I share this because my daughter lost hundreds of hours of instruction this year, and it didn't have to be this way. These are hours that all of the surrounding districts were able to give to their sped preschool students for months now. Just as a comparison, if Coral attended a class in Solana Beach, she would have received conservatively four hundred in-person SAI hours this school year. Instead, she has received roughly fifty hours of in-person learning time just because she lives in a different zip code. How is this equitable? This clearly has nothing to do with COVID. The educational code says that districts must offer in-person learning to the greatest extent possible. This means that if it can be done, it must be done. We know it can be done because every surrounding district has done it for their youngest and most impacted preschool students. So why does OUSD think it's okay to ignore educational code and my daughter's right to her education? Especially since the district has been given millions of dollars to get kids back in class. I call Coral my coral fish because she loves the water. If the world was a water park, she would not be considered disabled in so many ways. But instead, she is growing up in a world that judges her on her ability to climb a tree, expects her to climb a tree, and often values her life on how she climbs that tree. But she is my fish. Board members, I ask you to hold the district accountable to presenting plans for all students in the district, especially the ones like my daughter who need to be in school to be learning, especially at this critical time of development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Elizabeth Leah, Lynn Gonzalez, and Charles Finn. Elizabeth will be first.
Good evening. Thank you for letting, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am speaking because I believe the district does not have the children of Oceanside's best interest at heart. Other districts all over the state have been able to open safely. Fifty-three percent of parents injured. Fifty-three percent of parents in June notified the school that they wanted full-time instruction. This is the last data that the school district has collected. The data is no longer accurate. We need a new survey, but we are past that time. The district failed to do what they needed to do earlier this school year. Students in Oceanside are experiencing the painful loss of peer connections, connections with their teachers, school staff, they're suffering a serious loss of learning and will have lifelong consequences of this learning loss. We may not ever know the full extent, but we do know that our board has a job to protect the education of Oceanside's youth. I'm a parent of three children, an eighth grader who does not remember the names of his teachers this year, a tenth grader who is a three-sport athlete, a straight A student who has no connection with her peers this year, none. I'm also a parent of a senior, a 4.4 GPA student who cannot even stand to talk about El Camino High. She will leave the room if the word "El Camino High School" are even mentioned. She feels completely betrayed. My children are fortunate enough that I'm home to support their needs, and I know many others are not in the same boat as me. I'm asking the board to vote to open middle and high school students full-time. The children of Oceanside deserve it, and their mental health demands it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Lynn Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you. Hi, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Begin, school board members, Dr. Vitale. My name is Lynn Gonzalez, and I've been teaching in Oceanside for twenty-nine years. Throughout the entirety of this school year, a very vocal minority of people, not just in Oceanside but around the country, have offered up a perplexing idea that school districts are belligerently ignoring their desires to have their children in school. The truth is that school districts have been working tirelessly to provide a quality education while keeping the community safe during a pandemic. These are not normal circumstances by any, to say the least. Oceanside's elementary schools have already gone through four schedule changes this year, all in response to changes in our community's vulnerability to COVID-19. Needless to say, this is quite disruptive for our families. Now the district's administration is proposing yet another schedule change. This time, it is not due to changes with the pandemic, but due to a failed lawsuit. The proposed schedule has not been vetted with teachers or parents and is planned to disrupt our families with just thirty-two days left in the school year. Perhaps most upsetting of all is that the proposal calls for all children to be in the classroom at the same time. It goes directly against CDC and California Public Health Department's strong recommendation that children maintain a minimum of three feet social distance from one another. The plan still contends that teachers will stay six feet away from children, even while having double the amount of students in their classrooms. Let's be clear, the idea that you can have a full classroom of students seated at double desks all while maintaining three feet of social distancing, it's not even plausible. I urge you to slow this down. Parents and teachers need to have input. Decisions of this magnitude need to be collaborative with all stakeholders' positions considered. While vaccinations are offering us a bright tomorrow, we are not there yet. Do not spike the football at the ten-yard line. Let us remain with the current schedule and finish out this school year. Let us work on summer opportunities and a fresh start in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Is that it? Oh, hi, Charles.
Good evening. I'm just waiting for somebody to hit the full screen button because that'll block out my words that I've written down, and I want to be able to see them.
All right, your timer is starting.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The district is proposing to return, see, now they did it, and I can't see my writing, sorry. The district's proposing to return all students to the classroom at once. I have thirty-three students. The minimal three-foot social distancing just isn't possible in my classroom. The principal has been working with me, coming in and measuring, trying to come up with some sort of plan to accommodate thirty-three students, three feet apart, with me, the teacher, six feet away. No matter what the furniture configuration, it is not physically possible. So we're looking now at moving some students out of my class for the remainder of the year. That's literally squeezing kids shoulder to shoulder, inches apart. Why? Not because of health updates or new scientific understandings, it's just politics. This is responding to a lawsuit from a few angry but very vocal parents. But when do we get to hear the voices of the rest of my students' parents? They haven't been consulted about this soon-to-be-fifth schedule change of the year. With all the various program changes, I am the third or fourth teacher many of my students have had this year. Now, if our only option is to move kids out of my classroom, some of them are going to have to be moved and get another teacher for the last few weeks of school. And we need to be honest with the community. These proposed changes won't have a significant impact on the minutes of instruction. They will not increase social emotional support programs and services. These program changes weren't designed to help students, they're designed for the adults. They will make life easier for some of the parents and administrators while placing a burden on classrooms. My fifth graders understand why we do social distancing, and they can see through this ridiculous notion that you'll have social distancing outdoors at recess and then pack people into an indoor classroom with no social distancing. I want to teach my students, I want to be with my students, I want them to be successful, but I want them to be safe above all. So I'm urging you to slow down this push for putting everybody in the room at the same time. We could accomplish as much with much greater safety just by using our existing schedule and adding students back on campus on Wednesdays. They'd still be in their AB cohorts, not crowded, still socially distanced, but more time and every day at school. Please pause and talk to the parents of all the students and all the stakeholders and find out what we need before you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers, Ann?
No, we do not. Sean Heskew is not in the room.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna shift into, let's see if we have any questions for staff. So we'll bring Dr. Levy back up. And I'll turn it over to my board colleagues. Does anybody have any questions about that presentation?
The, the Bridge Program, could you, this is way in the way back. Could you explain the Bridge Program a little bit more detail about what that looks like? It said one or two weeks. I think it was two weeks for, for sixth grade and ninth grade?
Yeah, two weeks for the older students and one week for the kindergarten students. It'd be a half-day program, an opportunity for the students to be able to tour the campuses. Each school site would tailor it to their own school site, be able to have opportunities to check out where the restrooms are, if at the kindergarten, for them to see where the learning centers are, for them to be able to have those kinds of opportunities, meet some of the teachers, or, you know, get used to going to the big school, right? And so one of the things that we've always liked to do with kindergarten is to take our kindergarten students as a little tour, like, here's your principal and here's the ladies in the office. So we would be thinking about that kind of thing for kindergarten. And our sixth and, our rising sixth and ninth graders would be more focused on what are some of those transitions? Especially as middle school, you're going from possibly having two teachers who share their curriculum to having six or seven teachers. So how does one approach that? Looking at some of the, one of the things that I've seen done very well is using some of the Avid strategies, the WICAR, helping them to understand how to create a binder to keep their materials in order, that type of thing. And then when we are looking at the high school, really looking at that four-year plan. How do we help students to start thinking about what their four-year plan is as they look at their college and career readiness? How do they think about what are the courses they need to take and how they can be best prepared for their future? So really, it's going to be all of those things along with some social, emotional, and getting to know some friends. What we know is that when students do enter, whatever year a student enters into a new school, whether it's a school that starts middle school in seventh grade or sixth grade, there's always a transitional time. And so by giving this support to them, we hope to be able to provide them basically a nice runway to start before the really tight academics happen for them. It'll also be a smaller group for them, so they won't be among all of their peers that time when they get a chance to find their way around the campus.
I have a question about the summer school for high school students. In terms of being able to earn credits in the core classes and maybe electives, will that be a possibility? Are we still planning?
It'll absolutely be around, oh, sorry. Yes, it'll definitely be around credit recovery. And we'll be prioritizing those students who may be struggling to complete the credits needed for graduation. That'll be the priority. Again, looking at what availability we have through our Apex system. So one of the things you'll see later on on our board agenda is approving our Apex. That allows students to be able to, through independent study, collect some credits and also for in-person instruction for skills that will also help them with their credit recovery.
Now, going back to that Virginia program, so we're gonna be having the fifth and ninth graders for two weeks on the campuses. Are we also going to have counselors there? Because I know that the students, as they made their schedules for the coming year, it was a quick change, so parents didn't have any, any time to, to be involved and to help and to, to figure it all out. So as we're looking forward to the future, again, because we're looking at the CTEs for the, the upper levels, are they're going to be able to, to have communication, is there going to be assistance for the, even the parents that may have questions? And to have an opportunity to, to give them that, that voice that they would need to at that time?
So right now, we'd have to look at what I, the contract is for our counselors. What we are looking is bringing back as a voluntary counselors and APs and teachers who want to do that. But it's a great suggestion and definitely something we'll look into building into the program.
Question again along summer school lines here. You indicated on that chart, a thousand-plus students in elementary school and a thousand-plus students in secondary school. Can you serve more? Can you serve less? Or more in question, can you handle if there's a greater demand? And are this, are these all pre-selected already where you've got kids who need credit recovery, you've identified that, or other kids who need it in the elementary level? I mean, a thousand, two thousand kids out of sixteen thousand doesn't seem like a lot in this last year of chaos.
Absolutely. We also know, we have, we have really two things going on. One is, again, not having known we're having this money so soon, right? So we're going to be also be able to offer a program next summer, too. So we fully expect that next summer we'd be able to do even a more robust program. But when we look at this, we are, really our constraint really is around finding qualified people to run our programs. And what we believe at this time is we, we only want the most qualified, certificated and classified employees working with our students. Some school districts that have very large summer programs will maybe go outside of that or not look for those credential teachers. As Mr. Joyce was like, please tell me, you know, we're going to make sure we're using those credential teachers. So what we've done is we've surveyed to see which teachers have interests in working and, you know, what they're going to be doing and how we can pay them. So yes, we, right now, we estimate that with a minimum, we can serve a thousand students. So we're trying to balance the human resources that we have available and also the student interests. So we also want to keep those class sizes targeted for students who are looking at credit recovery and for students who may have experienced the deepest learning loss. And of course, we will continue with ESY, expanded, expanded school year for our students with more severe disabilities who may experience regression over the summer.
Do we have a summer, I'm sorry, Dr. Begin?
Okay, go ahead, finish your line. Forget, you got a line. I'll wait.
This is just one. So the, on the summer program, are all English learners eligible for summer programming?
Yes, they are. And we've done that through Title III. We actually had a summer programming last year for them virtually, and they were able to actually get hands-on materials that they were able to take back to their home and work in small groups with teachers. So they, this is actually, they are not included in that thousand number. I think last year, I can't remember how many, sir, but it was it's a couple hundred, I think, between a hundred and a hu, and a hundred and fifty, I think.
And that's about, I'm testing my math now, it's like twenty percent of our district English learners?
No, it's, no, it's not that high. And it depends on the grade level as well. We have more English learners, you know, in our early grades, and then they exist as well.
So I have a question that was brought up by several public comments. When was the last time we surveyed our parents?
They are correct. We did survey in June. One of the reasons that we actually stepped away from some of the surveys is because that's when the tiered, the, the CDPH guidelines and the tiered system went into place. And when that went into place and the health orders went into place, it stopped being really, we had to follow those orders. And while we were in purple and deep purple, we were not allowed to open any schools in our state. So that's kind of why, at that point, we felt to continue to ask parents about a choice that really wasn't a choice for them was a waste of their time at that time based on it. So that's the reason that we stopped that. We did actually, though, survey at the beginning of the year for those families who did want to go to virtual and stay with virtual. And that's how we established our Surfside Academy virtual instruction. So that's why we have about six hundred kids in that program for families who were very clear that they wanted to stay with virtual for the entire school year.
And does that program have any space right now for more students? Or, because I, when, when parents got that choice at the beginning of the year, they were making it not knowing what the future held. None of us knew how long this pandemic would go on and what the trajectory was. So is there a space?
We do have some spaces in the program right now. And our principal is working with families, and there are some spaces available across different grade levels. Because as people have, like you said, not knowing how long it's gone on, made different choices, different things. We have, every day, our enrollment changes.
So there is a possibility that we could survey our parents to find out how many because we want to have their students back with, in the classrooms. We could do that.
We could always do a survey of families. It would be specific to what we would want to find out. You know, that would be, we would just have to define what was, we were looking at, but we could definitely develop that survey.
Okay, thanks. And then I had another question, and then I'll let my other colleagues go. So I'm looking at the staff recommendations, elementary return five days a week on a modified schedule. I know that you negotiate that schedule with the practitioners. My question for you is, how are we going to get all those students in a classroom and keep the three-foot distancing?
So the three-foot distancing is a recommendation, and the majority of our class sizes at the elementary level are in the range of twenty-four. We do have twenty classrooms that are thirty and above, and we do have a range of classrooms between twenty-five and thirty. So again, it's a recommendation. We have other layers of mitigation in place, such as filtration, PPE, the plastic barriers, staff being eligible for the vaccine. And just in some brainstorming that Dr. Levy did with principals, just in the idea of for those larger class sizes and the three-foot distancing again is a recommendation. They would come up with different things, such as using the intervention teacher to pull students from the class, as Mr. Finn talked about. Yes, there could be another teacher change to try and balance out some classes. There could be additional students that decide Um, there could be additional students that um decide if this is the recommendation that's accepted by the board. Um, parents might not want their uh students in that situation and that could uh decrease some of the class sizes. So um, those would be just some of the initial thoughts that come to my mind.
So once we know that we're not doing the three-foot distancing in those classes, we can. Ask our parents if they want to have their students back because as board president, I get many emails from many parents. Some parents are teachers, et cetera. And I'm seeing. An uneven balance of people that really want to adhere to the three-foot distancing and feel safe sending their kids back to school. And then I have the other group that just get them back in and put them all in the classroom. So. I really think we need to reach out to our families and find out what their preference is. And if we don't have enough room in our Surfside, how are we going to accommodate these families that don't want to have their kids in a classroom? Without that, highly recommended from the CDC, three-foot distancing.
Well, what I can say with every pivot that we've made, um, and as noted, there have been uh several. Uh, we've been able to accommodate the requests of our families.
Except for the waiting lists with the enrichment programs, right?
That, that's been a moving target. And so um, as Dr. Lovey, because I often question about that. Um, because our board members often question about that. And what she reminds me is that's, that's constantly a moving target. So it's not like it's been the same. Uh, say if there's fifteen kids on the waiting list, it's not like it's been the same fifteen kids. Based on whatever decision we're making and the change that's happening and the shifting, which we acknowledge has been a lot. We, we completely understand that. And we're all trying to shift with the expectations and the changes and C D P H and literally everything in this last year. Um, so it's been a rolling, moving uh target, Stacy. It, it hasn't been a, a static list. So we've been able to accommodate as people come and go uh from the program and their needs change.
Alright, thank you. Other board members, you have questions?
I actually, I actually have a couple of questions. Um, so we're looking at. Again, another change for our families. So we're affected, so we're not considering again going and asking and doing a survey. And how our families are going to be affected because now we're going on to our fifth, this time of change, you know, of. Of our schedule changes again with our students and everything and our families trying to accommodate, getting carpool together, getting sitters together, getting everything. Which leads me now then to another question too, and another problem that our families are having an issue with is because if we offered. When we were in the normal, we had before and after-school care for our families. We don't have that anymore. And I'm not understanding why we don't have that for our families when we know now that there is a need because we have the A. The morning and the afternoon. So our families do have a need and so we don't, we're not supplying those needs currently. And now we're going to change it again. And we're affecting our families again on doing another change. So, and we're not still giving them and supplying. And give, and supporting them with the things that they need. So. Without asking, without reaching out to our families and really knowing what they truly want. Because we've al- we've obviously been told by multiple people that we're not asking and we're not listening to our, our community, obviously. That this is what we need to do. So we need to actually, in all honesty. Go out and find out what it is that they need and what they're looking for and how can we serve them better? Not just in making sure that their students are getting the support that they need as far as their education. As far as um the special needs that are getting the supports that they need and and looking and giving in them the supports that they should have had all along. So can, is there a way and and how long would it take to get all this into play?
So there were a few questions in there. So Mercedes, uh, why don't you first take the question about how we've worked with our after-school providers? And how they too have responded to many, many, many changes as we. Continuously try to meet the needs of all stakeholders and Oceanside Unified. But I know you have information on how they made the pivot and change and some of the limitations of their hours of their staffing, et cetera.
Thank you. Yes. So uh, first of all, I want to say I've really been proud to work with our uh partners who are providing uh these programs. Uh, when they started, uh, you know, they were the first responders providing those supports for our first responder families. And the program started with maybe we had about a hundred or two hundred kids in it. And to the ti- today where we have a thousand students participating. So that's really a great expansion on that. They also have been following all of the C D P H guidelines um and working very diligently to make sure that they have a safe environment. Uh, while we changed from one system to the other, one, a couple of things that became to light. One of those is that. Uh, the program has a maximum of thirty hours per week that um they can operate while it's grant-funded. When we started to have, um, when we started to have uh the opportunity to refund, we can expand it. But what we do know is that we do have stable cohort groups and they also have employees. So students being. Longer than eight hours with the same person when we were in total virtual, that was one of the limitations. Because again, that person needs to have lunch. They need, they can't work more than forty hours. So as we look at that, one of the things that I know. Um, our after-school providers have been looking at and already thinking about what might happen. About how they can continue to provide those supports ongoing, should we pivot in our schedule and could they work lo- longer in the afternoon? But one of the things that might impact is. Be, the way that we have a thousand students being able to be served at this time is because we use the same classroom for two groups of students, right? The students who go in the morning and the students who go in the afternoon. If we went to a, you know, that system, we'd have to work out and look at hiring some more people and things like that to provide that same level of coverage. But as Dr. Vitali said, every time we pivoted, um, people had circumstances have changed and people have had different needs. So we would work uh diligently to. Um, address that need using whatever uh funds and opportunities we have. So those are some of those things that are going on.
And you could survey the parents, what their needs are as well. Anybody else have any thoughts or questions?
Uh, so one thing I wanted to, to ask uh for board member discussion before we get to. The five days a week and the secondary schools. Outside of those two decisions. Uh, I would ask that we, we again, look at our students from the equity lens that we've all committed to. We know that the pre-special ed preschool model. Of doing any kind of virtual learning is not an accessible point of education. I think we know that there are certain populations that we can still maintain the safe spaces. And now that we're in the orange tier and by the time we get through these next two weeks, we could very well be in the yellow tier. Uh, I think we need to make action tonight to get those students back into school full-time that really. Really don't access education when they're at home. So I, I would ask the board to give direction. For two weeks from now that English learners, students that are in Matzvir or full-day programs. And students that are um. Well, those two groups especially. To, in the secondary model where they might not have access to the instruction five days a week. To provide them five days a week in-person instruction on our secondary campuses. Does anyone else have thoughts about serving those two groups specifically from an equity lens now that we have resources available now that we? Know that we have space and now that the conditions of spread have gotten to a point where we know it's much safer to have students in person.
My only concern with that is that what courses are that, would they be taking? Okay, and especially in high school, there's such a diverse and widespread uh. Level of courses and ha- and hiring the instructor for that course. You may have a course with maybe one or two students. You may have a course um with twenty-four students. So that's, that's my concern. And along with that, the other thing is um, we haven't ever talked about and hopefully um. I know we're planning for, what about those students who they didn't complete the course? When they, and they still haven't completed the course. So they may need to take the course again, which comes under what retention? How's that affect them? In terms of being a four-year graduate. I know there's a, Lorena Gonzalez has this bill. She's proposing that all high schools be fifth year, which um. It's a man, she wants it as a mandate and of course to be an unfunded mandate. Which are totally. Other than getting ADA, it's just not feasible for us. But again, when we look at high school, especially high school and even the middle schools, um. We need the instructors, not just, you know, to, to teach those courses and. We need to be able to track those students to those courses. If, if we have a student who's taking A P Spanish. Maybe only, like I said, of a, a few students. And um, that's to be very quote-unquote expensive compared to the regular school year.
So one reason I bring this up is because a lot of this funding that we got. From these different sources is based on our L C F F calculations. Which are directly looking at an equity basis. We get more money for the students or English learners. We get more money for students that. Um, uh, are free and reduced lunch. So. I think we have a responsibility now that we do have more wiggle room in, in our secondaries to provide more to those students. Dr. Lovey, do you have any ideas about how, how we could do that? I know I'm kind of, not kind of, I am definitely putting you uh on the spot. But if you, if you have any ideas, I mean, they're in the mornings, they're also the virtual day. I mean. Yes, I'll leave it to you.
So I think the key issue here um, that uh Ms. Evans brings up really is. A different problem than we've had in education before. So up until this point, generally speaking, our biggest challenge is that we had a lack of funding. Um, what has happened is that we have received a great deal of funding all at the same moment, at the same moment as everyone else has as well. So what has happened is this has been a strain upon the human resources available to us. As we know, teachers are highly qualified and trained. They have specific credentialing. And the number of people that we're able to hire um is somewhat limited. So especially with a six-week left in school, we were able to hire those thirty intervention elementary people. And that was a great thing. But again, as we're looking at, if we were to look at secondary for English learners, we could possibly find a, a teacher. Who might be able to teach one of those period lines, but then it could impact the students' other period lines for them to have it. Because they're integrated into all their other courses, right? Um, but that's one of the reasons that we have the Secondary Learning Center so that they would be um on campus for in-person learning. And so that would be something we could look at for like perhaps the English learners. But again, looking at getting the human resources hired. Um, do the recruitment and of course, I'm probably speaking to uh. Uh, Dr. Racketeer's uh idea, but just the idea of that piece and trained and all of those things in place.
So I, I guess specifically for the secondary, the students who are English learners, then their best leverage point would probably be the afternoon when teachers are not. They, they don't have a line and students also don't have a line of classes there. So. Um, there is good data for regular tutoring even, for, for regular small group tutoring that, that, that supports students. So. I would ask for more consensus that we do something to specifically target. Supports for the English learner population over the last six weeks of school, especially for our secondary.
And that could be done on Wednesdays, but for elementary. I have, um. I do have a question for you that was brought up by one of the public comments. Can you tell us what's going on with our preschool, special education students? And their program?
Yes. So one of the things that we have with special education in preschool is we actually run into two things. One, the fact that they're young and so they already have. Class size maxes and that they also have a program. So we have two different programs. We have a four-day-a-week program in, in pre-COVID time. We have a four-day-a-week program and which is for our students who have um the most, uh, are most impacted by their disabilities. And we have a two-week, uh, two-day-a-week program for students who have less impact um in special education. And we also have our state preschool. Um, and they all tend to share the same facilities. Because we really believe in making sure we have as many opportunities for the students to work with typical peers and to have inclusion. And so I know I've been working with my, uh, our team to look at each school site and to see how much space they have. Uh, because again, they also need to have a certain number of toys and a certain number of space for them to work with. So we are looking at which sites we could be able to expand it and see um how we can make sure that we provide them with that education in a safe manner. Um, the enrollments are pretty high, um, because they've always done half-day. So it's like twenty in the morning and twenty already in the afternoon. So this, that's why when we split it. It doesn't split the same way because we're really talking forty enrolled with one teacher. So that's kind of some of the challenges that we have going on.
So we are looking at um. Expanding the in-person instruction for the preschool.
Yes.
Coming up. Okay. Before the end of the school year. That's what.
We're definitely working to find every way we can bring them back as much as possible.
Alright, super. That, well, I have, I have a list of things that I just want to throw out there with my fellow board members. I, I'm really concerned about student health and safety. There's no way we can do the three-foot distancing. I'm not comfortable as a parent putting my kid in a school without the three-foot distancing, even with the mitigation that's in place. I, I'm worried. I read the news about the emerging COVID variants. The science, I pay attention to that. We are watching the data in San Diego County and specifically for Oceanside. But what I'm reading about these new COVID variants with our young students, young children, our. Secondary students being infected and possibly hospitalized is scary and there's not enough information yet. I, I find a lot of these schedule changes for elementary. This is the fourth or fifth, if you looked at how many times we pivoted. Um, they're disruptive. They're super disruptive to schedules. I mean, this pandemic has been completely inconvenient for everyone, right? I mean, to be honest with you, but we've gotten through it, but it's super disruptive. Not only for the parents and their schedule and their work schedules, but also to the learning environment in the classroom. Yeah, so it's impacting students, teachers and families. People have settled into a rhythm. The elementary teachers and the elementary parents that I've spoken to with this A M P M schedule were a little. Off-guard in the beginning, but they've made it work. They have their carpools, they're working together, they have their students in the after-school program. They're, they're making it work and they're, they're going. They've been doing it for a month. I haven't had any complaints. As a board member in an email about the A M P M hybrid schedule that we have right now, four days a week, which is great. Um, I just think it's super disrupted to change the schedules. I can't imagine being a teacher right now and having to redo. The lesson planning once again with how we deliver instruction, but they'll do it. They'll make it happen. I'm worried about the class sizes. So right now, elementary or secondary, you only have half the students in there. This is something we've always begged for is smaller class sizes so we can individualize instruction for our students. Especially their social, emotional learning needs. Um, right now, the teacher has half the kids in the class. They're able to connect with them on a one-to-one basis. Work with them and then they get the other batch. So it's working. I'm also worried about all the support services that we learned about earlier tonight, which are great, right, for the social, emotional supports. But all of that is coordinated. Those are schedules. Everything's going to just get pushed into chaos when we look at. The special ed scheduling that goes in when they're working, the P E, the library, the counselors, I can go on. But that part, I think we're rushing it too quickly. So I know. We've been really careful as we've gone through these pivots or phases of reopening. And it's important that we continue this journey to reopen, but we have some obstacles in our way. And I think the other board members have brought up several of them. I would really like to see us continue to reopen. Gradually, but I think we need to talk to our parents first. And I think we need to consult with the county public health department to make sure that this. Highly recommended three-foot distancing is actually safe for our students, families and staff. So that, that was my two cents.
And I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back before we go on to vote on this. Um, I'm asking for students that are in Mod severe classes. To be given access to instruction five days a week that are not attending a block schedule where they're going to all those classes. This is another, the equity thing. I'm asking for yeses and nos from everybody because.
Can this be done? And are you talking secondary or elementary, Eric? I'm just asking for clarity. I, I understand.
It would be all, so uh, it would be all equity basis. It would be all, so it would be all on an equity basis.
So when you talk about additional, so when you talk about additional support, that can be offered at the secondary level regardless of what classes. So you talk about tutoring programs. Could we look at paying teachers, for example, to tutor kids after school or look at other possibilities to specifically support the populations that you mentioned? That would be a yes on that. We could look at that and probably create something. We would need to see if we have the workforce that would be willing to do that. And at the elementary level, remember, we do have two intervention teachers who are allocated Mercedes correct at every elementary school. And they're working with the populations most, I would say, probably recommended by their teachers. Specifically, I'm certain that many of them are EL and/or mod severe. So that's something we already have in place at the elementary. And yes, we could build. The, the issue at the secondary level, Eric, with saying we want them back five days is because they are all in scheduled classes and it wouldn't necessarily work out that they could be on campus every day and following their schedule. You can't just do that for some kids because an EL kid, they're not necessarily going to have the same schedule at the secondary level.
That's, yeah, it's different for the, for the students of English learners versus the students who are not necessarily going to full scheduled classes. Or even if they are, maybe they're in on the other days to do all of their goal work that is separate from the full inclusionary. I'm, I'm, I'm asking that we offer, we don't offer the same thing to everyone, that we do look at being more equitable in our offerings for the rest of the year, especially since we know that we're in the orange tier and we're, our case rates are declining and have continued to decline.
So I'm not hearing a second for your motion. Eric, are you making a formal motion?
Think because this is a consensus item, it wouldn't be a motion. It would be, everybody can give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
I'm all for, I'm all for having students that need more assistance, get the assistance and giving direction to Dr. Vitale and Dr. Lovey to look at ways to expand the in-person instruction for our high need students. I, I can't tell you what that's going to look like. I think they have to really examine, you know, some of those obstacles in place. But I think I, I agree that they need more support. Definitely. And I'm happy to hear that the preschool is moving forward with expanding the in-person learning for preschool students. I don't, anybody else want to weigh in?
I just, I want to clarify though. Are you asking for them to move forward and to look into this? Or is it to just vote on it and to say, hey, we want to automatically just give them more than just the two intervention teachers that they currently have. So I think I need clarity on that. I think I'm a little confused and lost on that part of it. So I understand.
Yeah.
Because remember, this is, it's late.
My perspective, as Eric had said earlier on one of the items, I don't have enough information to vote on that as an absolute direction or mandate tonight. So I, I mean, I don't mind the direction to staff to look into that. But I'm not mandating that they do it. Because we don't have enough information. We're shooting from our hip here. We don't have the constraints. We don't know the dollars of that issue. I, I appreciate the goal and the direction. I mean, I want, I want everybody back too. You know, we're, we're dodging the elephant in the room, which is the core question. And we, we, we probably need to get onto that one on the elementary. What are we going to do? What direction?
Well, I would like to make a motion. So. Well, I'm going to make a motion that we maintain our current in-person elementary school schedule until the district has consulted with county public health department to ensure the safety of our classroom environment as well as survey our parents and report back to the board.
Would you include staff having discussions with OTA too about the practicality of this too as well?
That's a given.
Period of time?
That, I, that is a given.
Okay, well, I want to hear that. I think the court would want to hear that that's a given too or not. They, they would know that. So I want to clarify that. Okay?
So I can, I can make that motion one more time. But let's try this. I make a motion that we maintain our current in-person elementary schedule until the district has consulted with the county public health department to ensure the safety of our classroom environments, continue negotiations with our labor partners, and survey our families and report back to us at our next board meeting.
Could we add an amendment stating that as we make progress towards full opening or something to that effect?
I, I will accept a friendly amendment.
What's what?
I know. I, I need some clarity on that, Eleanor.
Okay, um, since trustee blessing brought it up about the courts, one of the things that's been man, it's been discussed is that we are demonstrating that we are making progress towards full enrollment. So perhaps with including that statement, that does cover that.
And I believe that we are moving towards phasing more into expanding our in-person with our elementary, with our preschool program that's happening. We're also looking at ways to provide more interventions to our students that need it most. And we've talked about that already. So we are expand, we are continuing to move towards our phase. I don't have enough information to be able to make that decision tonight. So I would like the district to go out and consult with the county public health department as well as survey our parents. They've asked for that.
Okay. Well, I can accept the request for the data on that.
I, I'm going to need clarification on what you want me to ask parents. So that you're, it, it sounds like you want to take action based on what the majority of parents respond. So what, I'm going to need clarification on what you're going to want me to ask. But you, you need a second and then you can vote or however you want to do that. But I would like for more clarification. So that, so that you get the answers to the questions you're looking for, if that's what you intend to take action on.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a second yet. Go, go ahead and talk. Go ahead. No, no, I'm looking for a second on my motion that I made.
I don't think I can speak to it until there's a second or unless it dies. I think, can I get a clarification?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
It's all right.
It's late.
Raquel, we have a second?
Yes, we have a second.
Raquel's second.
Okay. So I'll speak to, yeah, yeah. I'll speak to Mike thoughts on the motion. So at our last meeting, we talked at length and even in the meeting before about how the situation is changing quickly. We do, it would be changing quickly. And we saw, especially at our last meeting, the, the case rates and the cases and the hospitalizations and the effect that it's having on communities, all of those impacts dropping. And so I was, I, I thought at our last meeting that we were really clear that if the conditions were available for us to move to getting our students back into more instruction, that we were going to do so. That's, that's why I thought we didn't call a special board meeting in between this meeting and the last meeting, even though we dropped into the red and then we precipitously dropped into the orange. I was trying to remain as patient as possible for this meeting because I knew that we would be coming up with, we'd be in the celebration of the, the orange tier of case rates bottoming out. Again, we might be in the yellow tier just a couple of weeks. It's very likely. So I'm speaking against the motion because I, I made a commitment that when the science showed that it is the time to take action and to get students back in the classroom, that I, that I think that I know that it's the right thing to do to move ahead. And if, if we can't come to a consensus with our, our bargaining teams, then we need to create conditions to which that they can come to a consensus on. That's, I think we need to be making an actionable move tonight, given the, the, the state of the virus. And that's what's always been holding us back. The lawsuit is a lawsuit. This is what I'm focused on. The conditions now are very low spread. I understand that it's really concerning to have a lot of students in. I think we need to be as creative as possible to keep those students with their teachers, to open up any multipurpose room spaces, to employ any teachers that we had. We hired 32 or 36 intervention teachers.
Thirty.
Thirty. So they're credentialed teachers that are on our campuses already. For the next two weeks, they could be building that rapport, getting the data from their teachers. It is definitely not ideal. But we're in a situation that, you know, I, I really feel for teachers making transitions as I had to make one this week too. It's awful. And it's terrible that we have to ask you to do this, but we're looking at, you know, possibly an 80 hour difference in instruction. If we, if we have lunch on campus, which we haven't even kind of covered in this conversation, which I know has been, is a tricky spot. But if we can get the kids out and spread across campus, doing outdoor picnic lunches with plenty of space, then we're looking at even more than that. Those hours are, now they're attainable. And so that's why I'm speaking against the motion today.
And all of that takes time. That, all of that is going to take some time to do what you, what you said makes exact. Anyways, I agree with what you said. I just think it takes time. There, part of my motion was that they continue to work with our labor partners to come up with those creative solutions, be able to bring the students back more in-person on our campuses, but do it safely.
But to speak to the time that you bring up, I mean, that's why last meeting, we were, we talked annoyingly so that we need to be ready to make a fast shift at this meeting. And, and the other piece about time is that if we stall this out now, like you said, like right now, we're going to get six weeks of it back. But if we push it out another two weeks, four weeks starts to look less appetizing to ask for, for a transition. And then it looks even worse after that. So yeah, I don't know that there's going to be a time that makes more sense than now. I, I can't think of one. I, we have been very patient all year long despite a very loud and vocal small group of parents. And, and we continue to focus in on what's important, the safety and the conditions that we have to deal with. And, and so.
The, there were two things I neglected to say. I didn't actually give you a timeline. I apologize for that. We believe that we could conduct those negotiations and have the 10 days notification per our MOU and the notification to families to be able to make the transitions that they would make by the week of May 3rd. And also I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to limit what those negotiations might entail. So if as part of the negotiations, the three foot distance was, is a deal breaker for the board, then the bargaining teams would need to come up with a situation perhaps that didn't have that. So right now we have Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, AM PM, half the class. And so if, you know, the recommendation is to return on a five day a week modified schedule. So that, those negotiation teams would need to come up with what would that Wednesday look like then? And we have a lot of factors in place, right? We know that we have our MOU in place. We know that we have our contract in place. And the negotiating teams know what all those factors are. And so we would put it to them to come up with a schedule that would increase the in-person time, meet the five day modified schedule and maintain, if that is, i- i- is a priority, which it is for all of us, even though it's a recommendation, that three foot distancing, then those could be the parameters that we could have the negotiation teams deal with.
And I don't think anything in that, in your motion, Stacy, prevents that discussion from happening tomorrow. Does it? From your perspective, Stacy?
No, nothing. I, I want us to open for in-person instruction.
So the way I'm interpreting this, if it's voted on this way, is that we maintain our current schedule until we can consult CDPH. So I'm guessing if CDPH says that that is a three foot recommendation, you can come back, continue to, to negotiate, which we have on the schedule, and then survey parents. And that's the piece where I would need more direction. So if I can initiate a survey as soon as tomorrow with the questions that the board would want me to ask, and we gave them a couple of days, i- if the majority of the parents who take that survey then want, I mean, are we going to ask them, do they want full time? Are we going to ask them? Like, that's what I would need some more.
Are you comfortable having your kid in a classroom without the highly recommended three foot distancing? Do you need after school care? Do you need before school care? Right? The, I heard Raquel say a couple of those items.
Yeah, wait, hang on, hang on one second though, Stacy. And I want, I should have said this earlier on like survey because on the five day model, Julie, are we talking about, what's the day, what, and what would you speculate might be one of this, one of the, how long is a day? Is it, is it eight to five, eight to three, eight to two, eight to one? You know, in one sense, why do we ask parents about, you know, after school care when we may be going to school from nine to three? And that's like an academic question because that's a better situation than they've had all year. And they're gonna, you know, even though we can't give them full aftercare, we got them there from nine to three. We've expanded the time in the schoolyard, in the school day significantly. I mean, is that, is that relevant, Julie? Or is that not relevant? Because, because the survey seems to me like something that's not going to be useful. But if we got to do the survey, then do it and you figure out how to get the questions answered. But I think it's, I don't think it gives us anything that we don't in our gut. No. Parents want to be there. Like, yes, they love to be there after school. Yes, they love to have before school. If we can provide it, we'll do it. If we can't, we can't, you know? But we're just talking about coming in more hours with this distance issue. As, as practical, as the judge has directed us, as the state law directs us to try and service as maximum feasible, maximum feasible, I guess.
Greatest extent possible as practicable.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
The way that I think I can mostly answer that question, Mike, is that we have been able to accommodate the, I, I'm not going to say all requests in our elementary program and our secondary program for after school and before school and whatever hours, depending on what schedule we were in. And we've also been able to accommodate parents, request, parents and guardians requests as things have shifted. So as, as we've shifted schedules, if they wanted to stay in a full remote model, we've been able to accommodate that. As, as people have wanted to come off of that remote model and go back to school, we've been able to accommodate that. And staff, all staff has been working tirelessly to try and accommodate the needs of our families. And we haven't been able to accommodate everyone. And that's been unfortunate. And but with the, with the way this, that the situation is, people have varying needs, but we've been able to accommodate the majority of people. So I would expect with this next shift that we would be able to do the same thing.
And that's why I think the survey isn't really going to be beneficial per se. But.
Is that a motion, Mike, for an amendment?
Or do we, do we ask parents, do you want to change your schedule? Do you want to change your elementary schedule right now?
Sure. Yeah. I don't know. You'd want to ask.
I mean, seriously, that's the question. Do you want to, do you want to? Yeah.
If we get 50, 50, what do you do with it?
Well, that's how it is right now.
Say to add more days, if you, you're going to have to say to add more time or something because that's the purpose of it is to add more class time, right?
I was trying to figure out a way to address the parents that came on during public comment and some of the other public comments. Let's say we haven't reached out to our families since last June. So.
I heard that.
Yeah, I heard that. And, you know, it's hard to go back and fix it, but do we, do we communicate with them? And what do we ask? I'm not the expert on that. I just feel we don't have enough information. And we are expanding to the greatest extent possible as practicable. And then we're also providing summer school opportunities and the bridge opportunities. So this in-person instruction is going to continue throughout this, throughout the summer, which we haven't had before, except for our ELL students. So we are continuing to expand our in-person instruction opportunities for our students.
I think I need a clarification review. Under staff recommendation, elementary return five days a week on a modified schedule. Did we actually set the dates and the hours? I know trustee blessing asked that question.
So we, the, we would negotiate what that schedule would look like. So we did not define that. So we, the, we would negotiate what that schedule would look like. So we did not define that. So it could be that Wednesday is also an AM, PM model. Again, there's a lot of factors, so it might not mirror what Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday look like, but that could certainly be an option. And then we think based on all the things that need to take place between now and a possible time for opening, the timeline would be May third. That we would, that we believe that we could get everything in place that needs to be in place. And it's not due to lack of planning. It's not due to anything other than the time for the transitions to take place. If that makes sense.
There's a lot of moving parts that most typical parents don't understand with a school district of this size making this, this pivot to this phase of in-person instruction that we have to work through.
Agreed. Agreed.
So I have a first and second for my motion. And, you know, it's ten seventeen, so I just.
Clarifying question. So this survey is for information only so that we can better provide whatever transition we need to provide. And that's for resources. It's not a determining factor. I don't think we shifted anything based on majority rule.
Right. No, that's true. Yeah, okay, I can, I can get there.
I was just trying to respond to a need that we haven't reached out to our parents. I, we've been accused of ignoring parents, which I find insulting, but I am a parent.
I don't want it to be a big-time impediment to good negotiations between staff and the, and our teachers. That's all. That's the main thing. So Julie, if you can figure out the questions with the board president, and we would go that way if this motion carries.
So what is the difference between the motion and elementary return to five days?
Mine is, my motion was that we maintain our current in-person elementary schedule, which is four days a week until the district has consulted with CDPH, you know, CP, oh my gosh, I'm losing my mind. Yeah, to ensure the safety of our classroom environment, continue to work with our labor partners, and survey our parents, and then report back to the board. This would give us more information about coming back and making sure we have that balance of safety and instruction. That we've been really diligent about this whole entire time.
So just for clarity's sake, will we need the San Diego Department of Public Health to say yes to reopening for further instruction anyway?
I'm not sure.
Probably should include them. Isn't that what, what was suggested?
I put the county public health department.
I thought it was the county department of public health. CDPH.
The CDPH and the CDC recommendation is three feet apart.
That's who you need to consult with.
So.
Is that not possible?
We're checking in with the county to see if our plans are, they give a green light to. That's the question?
No, isn't the question, would less than three feet be acceptable in some occasions? That's the question, right, Stacy?
Yeah, and what occasions are those? Which teachers are those that get stuck with the classes of the larger sizes? And which students are the ones that are moved into little spaces? There's a supervision issue here and total disruption to these students who've had these teachers all year long. I just, anyways, frustrated, clearly.
Right again, but Stacy, there could be a scenario where we could negotiate a schedule that adds the fifth day and still keeps the class sizes at half. That would, that, that is a definite option.
It is. I, I haven't seen that option. You, that hasn't been presented to us because it's like you need more time.
Negotiated, right.
You need more time.
And just for clarity's sake, for everybody, if we went with the staff recommendation, we would continue to negotiate with OTAs as well.
Yes, right.
That's my understanding.
And so no consultation with county public health department.
We could provide that. I, I mean, I, I think they're extremely responsive to requests. I think that can be folded right into their recommendation. I would actually be highly in support of that to hear, to get their feedback on our plan for reopening five days in person.
And that's all I asked for, so.
So you would accept staff's recommendation on the, with the caveat that we consult with the county to get the green light on our reopening plan?
And we stay in our current schedule that we're in right now, until we have that information to expand our in-person instruction.
We could get that information so that that could inform negotiations, and that could happen as early as tomorrow.
All right.
And, and are we dropping the survey then?
I, I'm not married to the survey, but it seemed to be a huge need that our families and public comment also shared that no one's really reached out to them. About another schedule change. This is the fifth schedule change for elementary families to have to figure out transportation, supervision, et cetera. It's extremely inconvenient for some people. So, and we don't even know who was impacted by it or not, because we haven't asked.
And I, I know the board knows this, but those schedule changes weren't just random schedule changes. They were as a result, I, I know you know, Stacy, as, as a result to what was happening with the, the case rates. And when things spiked in December, as I recall, that's when we went back to full remote instruction and waited until March to come back when the case rates went down. And, and now they continue to go down. And so, again, I think, and so that's why the recommendation is being made the way it's being made. And again, I want to reiterate that a fifth day doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be all kids in the class at the same time. It could be another version of what we have going on, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, in the form of a split day.
I still have a motion out there. Do you guys need me to repeat it so you guys can vote on it and then we can move forward? I'm sorry, I'm just. We're, we're talking around things. So I'm gonna make my motion again. My motion is that we maintain our current in-person elementary schedule until the district has consulted with the county public health department to ensure the safety of our classroom environment, continue to negotiate with our labor groups, and survey parents and report back to us.
That's the motion with the second.
Yes, that's the motion with the second.
I, I feel that parents have said they, they weren't saying they wanted the survey. They were saying they wanted the schools open as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's kind of my spot too, but I'm willing to concede it now. Staff can figure out how to do a quick survey. We'll get beat up over it either way anyway, so. You know?
Well, I'm going to call for the vote, so if we're done with discussion.
Can I do a, offer a friendly amendment to split the survey with this current motion? So the survey is a separate motion.
You want the survey as a separate motion?
Yeah.
That's fine. I, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Do we want to vote on the first part first?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need me to read it again? I can. I wrote it down.
I don't, no.
Okay. All in favor or supporting the motion that I made, minus the survey?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No.
One no?
No.
No. Motion carries three-two. Now we'll go to the, your motion, Eric, that you made about the survey. Is that?
Yep. So this would be a motion to survey parents to offer the best supports that we can through the remainder of the school year. Sorry, I'm trying to capture your motion.
Let me. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna make clear here what that motion is, because my intention is to vote against the survey, so. Is it a yes vote against the survey, or is it a no vote against the survey? Please clarify. Julie, you can, I mean, Stacy, you can rule as the chair.
I think, I, Eric, let me get this right. Eric is making a motion that we, I survey the parents.
Sorry, I, I, I just, I just made a motion to split the original. So whatever the survey idea is now, it can be considered separate. That's all.
And we don't have to make a motion on the survey. We can just provide direction to Julie and her team about communicating with parents.
Let's take a vote.
You want to take a vote on it?
May I make a?
Vote on the survey.
When we look at surveys, seriously, only about third people, third of people are going to respond. And we know those folks who do respond are the ones who spoke tonight. So, you know, we're asking staff to do something that's kind of redundant, more work on their plate. It's takes, it's taking time, energy and creativity away from our desire to open the schools as soon as possible. You know, it's something that's ancillary out there. We know what the response is going to be. We know who's going to respond. We need to focus on getting our schools open as soon as possible, with all energy directed towards that.
I'll call for the question on the survey. Stacy, will you make the, make the ask?
Do you want me to make a motion on it? I, I'll make a motion.
No, the chair just called, called for the vote.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, all those in favor of having a survey for our parents about our in-person instruction, say aye. I'm the only one, I think, aye. All those not in favor? Okay. Well, it doesn't look like you have to have a survey then.
So I, I need to ask, I need to ask for some clarification. So the way I understood the motion that you made and voted on and, right? No, I'm sorry. The one that you made, Stacy, about maintaining the current schedule. And until we consult the CDPH to see the specific issues about the three-foot distancing and that we continue negotiations. So, I mean, that can all be done as early as tomorrow. So am I bringing back a recommendation not until the May meeting? Are we making those adjustments? So if the CDPH says, no, you, it's a recommendation, you can do two feet, you can do one feet, and then we go right into negotiations with that information and then make the pivot, as we've done before, as the new schedule was put out for ratification?
I think you need to bring it to the board. Whatever the CDPH and whatever comes out with negotiations, needs to come to the board.
So I'm not bringing back a recommendation to the board until May?
No, we could do it sooner, if it's done sooner.
When you're ready, Julie, pass.
A board meeting?
Bring to us a session and we'll do it.
Okay. So as soon as we can get that done, I can bring that back to you, because we can, we can get, I would, I would imagine we can get the CDPH information pretty quick. That question answered pretty quick.
But it, but it's not the CDPH though, that's the state.
Uh, yeah, the state. You're right. You, you, you said the county health. Yes, sorry, my apologies. County Department of Public Health.
Yes. Bring it back as quick as. Bring it back as soon as you get a consensus with a path. With this.
So we might have to have another board meeting. And it'll be a short one, because this will be the only thing on the agenda. So the next, the next recommendation is secondary. Julie, do you want to go over your recommendation, so we can vote on that?
To stay consistent with the current model that we have in place.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Only comment is that we continue to expand special ed services to the greatest, greatest extent possible for all special ed learners.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the recommendation for secondary to remain?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we still have more stuff on our agenda, so I don't know if we can move off this topic. I'm looking at my fellow board members.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the robust discussion. I appreciate this. All right, so we're moving on to, I'm looking. Oh, we have, we have several items to vote on. So we have item eight B, a public hearing on the Williams settlement legislation. So I'm going to open the public hearing at ten thirty-one PM. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not on this item.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at ten thirty-one PM. We're going to move on to item eight C, the adoption of resolution thirty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Williams settlement legislation determining sufficiency of instructional materials.
Yes, thank you, board. This is a acceptance that we have reviewed our instructional materials and textbooks and that we do have sufficient ones as outlined in the Williams settlement of two thousand and four.
I have a question. Have we, have we received all the materials for English language arts in terms of the bookmark program?
Yes.
Benchmark, I'm sorry, benchmark program, so that we can begin, if it comes to that occurrence and attendance to have, testing, to use it as a pathway for us, our state requirements for testing. I know it's been wavered by the feds and by the states, but just in case, are we ready to go, just in case, in that area?
Yes, we would actually use our eye-ready test for our younger students. And at the high school, we actually are using the S-Back this year, based on the leadership of our high school principals for our eleventh graders. We have received our core materials from Benchmark and a number of the supplemental materials that we've ordered to address potential learning gaps. We've received, I'm not sure if we've received all of those just yet, because we did order them, but all of the core materials we've received for this entire year.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, I have a first and a second. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five-oh. Raquel, did you vote?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry. I just want to make sure. Five-oh. All right, our next item on the agenda is eight D, approval to continue license agreement with Apex Learning twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Yes, this is a licensure agreement with Apex Learning, which we have used for this year for our independent study. It also allows for credit recovery for our students in high school, and it is approved for A through G.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Nice. I have a first and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval of item fifty? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-oh. All right, motion carries five-oh. The next item, eight E, approval of use of OUSD graduation credit waivers form.
Yes, so this item reflects state law that we're allowed to use to allow students to graduate with a high school diploma with fewer than the two hundred and twenty credits that are in our district to go to the state standard, which is a hundred and thirty credits. Currently, we use this process for our homeless, foster youth, and military-connected students. This would allow us to expand this to all the students who have been impacted by COVID nineteen. It does not allow for a waiver of the core academics, but rather electives, and allows students to have the opportunity to graduate on time. This will not be used until we've exhausted all intervention opportunities through Apex and summer programming and things like that. But we want to make sure that we do have this as an option. There would be very few students who would need all of the, the ninety units changed, or the ninety credits changed. It might just even be a waiver of one course that they might just be slightly short of.
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
I'll second that.
I think it's excellent.
I'll second that. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Item?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Dr. Lovey. So now we're moving on to item nine. Did we have a question?
Sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to item nine personnel, 9A. We have a public hearing for proposed reopeners for the 2021, 2022 school year. I'm opening the hearing at 10:36 PM. Do we have any public comments? Anne?
Yes, Todd Madison.
All right, hi Todd.
Hi.
You're up. You know the rules, three minutes?
I do, all right, thank you very much.
There you go.
Thanks. So tonight, I thought I would ask some questions of the board and district relating to the reopening negotiations. So first of all, is the board aware of the fact that the second interim budget showed a deficit of $9 million this year, rising to 19.9 million ahead? Is the board aware of the fact that this deficit spending has generally been the rule since 2017 when the district first dropped into qualified budget status? Is the board aware of the fact that this means there's, there's no way to increase costs without creating a need to cut from our kids? Is the board also aware of the fact that in 2019, full-time certificated employees had a median total pay of $91,000 with median total compensation of $120,000? Is the board aware of the fact that the Census Bureau and the Department of Ed numbers show our certificated employees make almost $31,000 a year more in total compensation than comparably educated county residents? Is the board, does the board understand what a me-too raise is and how questionable the ethics around that are? Do they know that any increase negotiated will be applied to administrative staff, a group with a median total compensation of $158,000 a year? Is the board aware of the fact that OUSD has no turnover problems anywhere and that the district has no idea why any employees leave because they don't ask? Is the board aware of the fact that the district has never done a salary survey of wages in our area, so they have no idea how pay rates compare? Lastly, is the board aware of all the great things that could be funded for our kids with money that instead gets used for extra raises for employees over and over again? We see in the reopeners, the intent is to provide fair and equitable compensation competitive in the market. From the actual data, we can already do that, we're done. That should make the negotiations quick. The idea that our staff is underpaid and ready to leave at the drop of a hat is simply not true. Both are just missed, not just misunderstandings, but outright falsehoods because the people who say this actually do know the data, but choose to ignore it because it serves their interests. I would suggest the board take its financial oversight responsibilities seriously and pay attention to the data when negotiating new agreements. Let me be clear, I think our staff is great. I think they're second to none. I think they should be paid fairly. I'm fine with existing pay rates and raise schedules. What I'm not fine with is cutting from our kids to support paying increased rates substantially higher than comparable in our area. A few years ago, I was asked by, I was asked where parents were in these negotiations. I asked where parents were in these negotiations. Were paying the bills, were the ones the kids are hurt by cuts? I was told by a board member that he was my representative in this. It's true, however, I have to note that during the last election, there were zero contributions disclosed to his campaign by parents contrasting with 6,000 spent on his behalf by the union. I'd suggest all our boards start actually representing parents in these negotiations, not their campaign contributors. Let's do something different this time. Let's put our kids' interests first, not our district's interests. Thanks.
Anne, do we have any more public comments?
Not on this item.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 10:40 PM. We're going to move on to item 9B, proposed reopener by the Oceanside Teachers Association to negotiate with the Oceanside Unified School District for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Hi, Dr. Begin and board members. This is just the board's receipt of the negotiations proposal known as sunshine letters to the district from OTA to the district.
All right, so do we have any questions? This is standard. All right. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Proposed reopen? Aye?
Aye.
Do you have four? Eric, did you weigh in? Aye, okay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. I know it's getting late. 9C, proposed reopener by the Oceanside Unified School District to negotiate with the Oceanside Teachers Association for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Right, and this is the district's letter to ODA to engage in negotiations for next year's master contract.
Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second. All in favor of accepting? Say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Got two more guys. 9D, proposed reopener by the California School Employees Association and its chapter 370 to negotiate with the Oceanside Unified School District for the 2021, 2022 school year.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries 5-0. One more. 9E, proposed reopener for the Oceanside Unified School District to negotiate with California School Employees Association and its chapter 370 for the 2021, 2022 school year. Second. All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Yeah, uh-oh. All right. Oh, we got one more, sorry, I was on a different page. 9F, adoption of resolution number 32 for the 2021, reduction of classified positions and hours due to district reorganization.
Right, last year, the district made a decision for reorganizing the ARC program. And so this is the effect of that with our classified employees. And since that time, we've worked hard and met with all the employees to do replacement. We've successfully managed to find positions for all of the classified ARC positions except for one. There is one layoff due to an employee being hired only in that position and they had no job rights to any other positions to go back into. So we did meet with them and explain that it's a layoff from that position. However, they're welcome to apply to other openings, which we have in the district. They would just need to go through our application process. And that's been explained to that one employee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a quick question on that. Does that, with everybody that moved and transitioned over, did, did they stay basically with the same amount of hours or did they lose? Because of it?
As much as we could match them, we put them into either the same or as similar positions as possible. There were some that had reduction in pay due to difference in hours.
All right, but no further discussion. All in favor of item 9F?
Aye.
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 Raquel?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, I didn't hear you on mute. All right, motion carries 5-0. Now we're moving on to item 11, business. Item 11A, acceptance of independent audit report for 2019, 2020.
Thank you, President Begin. The California Education Code section requires that an independent audit be conducted annually for all school districts. The audit report is designed to provide citizens, taxpayers, students, investors and creditors with a general overview of the district's finances and to show the district's accountability for the money it receives. After the final audit report is presented to the Board of Education for review, it will be submitted to the County Office of Education. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the 2019, 2020 independent audit report.
I'll make a motion to. I'll second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a choice?
Oh, what do you mean? You can vote no, yes? Do you, do you have questions? Sorry.
Um, we are, we have this huge deficit.
With the audit report?
Legally, we have to, I guess, submit this, correct?
Right, the audit just goes through and makes sure that we're doing everything according to code, to our ed code. And then we report it out to you and let you know if there's anything that you should be concerned about or if there's any findings. So the board was sent the report a few weeks back and had a chance to review it then.
Yeah, I reviewed it several times. Okay. Um. I guess I'll support.
All right, sorry to rush you. I didn't mean to do that, Eleanor. I apologize.
No, you didn't rush me, it's just that. It's. We'll talk later, but I'm not, $9 million is.
Eleanor, to be clear, all you're doing is accepting the audit report. You're, you're not approving any expenditures or disapproving of any. I can't think.
I understand.
Of any deficits.
Not agreeing with it.
Sorry, you're, yeah, you're just, you're just acknowledging receipt of the report.
The audit report said we conducted business in the way we were supposed to conduct our business with our numbers, independent of what the numbers were. Said we accurately reflected what the situation was and that's all it does.
All right, that motion carried 5-0. So we're moving on to item 11B, adopt resolution number 33, appoint members to the Measure W Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, President Begin. Tonight, we are pleased to present eight members for our Measure W Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, also known as Measure W CBOC. The following Oceanside community members have volunteered to serve on the CBOC in the following roles. We have Haley Wansley, she's an active member of an Oceanside business organization. Robbie Calderon Haas, active member in a senior citizens organization. Robert Camo Gleisberg, active member in a bona fide taxpayers association. Melissa Campbell and Melissa Johnson are parent guardian or caregiver of a current OUSD student. Jessica Strick is a parent guardian caregiver of an OUSD student and an active member in a parent teacher organization. Then we have Gigi Gleason and Donald Gordon, who are community members. The district staff solicited applicants for at least seven positions on the, on the committee by posting information and applications for interested members. We did that on the district website. We received eight applications and we do recommend all applications as members to serve on the committee. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt resolution 33 to authorize the appointment of the members to the Measure W Citizens Bond Oversight Committees.
I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you to those eight people for volunteering.
I, I'll second that. Thank you, folks, for volunteering.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you. We're getting punchy here. We're almost done, guys. We got this. All right, item 12, policy development. 12A, approval of updates to board bylaw 9010, public statements.
Yes, so this is an update from CSBA and I want to make it clear with the board that the language is verbatim based on the California School Board Association recommendation. Staff did not make any changes to the recommendations made by CSBA. The board, of course, has the, the right to make any changes to these policies, but I just wanted to be clear that staff didn't write these, staff didn't create these, staff didn't modify these in any way. These are as, as put forward by CSBA.
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to strike the last sentence of the first paragraph from the recommendation. I think it is redundant upon, like, it basically asked us to follow our protocols, which is why we have protocols. And I also think it, it, it sets up a. I think it, it tries to be overly intimidating of making personal comments. And I think we are all very clear that when we speak outside, we are not speaking for, or we are speaking for ourselves. I just don't think it's necessary.
I have to kind of agree because it's kind of vague and misleading and confusing, so.
Yeah.
A little bit of all that.
So we have public comment as well. I'm not sure if you guys want to hear it first. I noticed that.
Yes, can we have public comment first?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, it's getting late. Todd, thanks for hanging in with us. Todd, would you like to get started?
Oh, this, this is easy. I just second Eric. That's all I was going to point out, is that it just seems like you're limiting your ability to agree or disagree with the board in ways to promote the board's ability to govern the district. It just seems like you wouldn't want to, to do that to yourself. But, so that's the extent of my public comment. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for hanging in there.
I'm not tracking or I needed you to read that again, Eric. Maybe I don't have it in front of me, actually. I got one, I got.
Let me read it so I can be clear that I'm, that I'm understanding Eric. My brain stopped one minute ago, I didn't even realize we were here. So on the 9D-10B, the public statements, Eric, where it starts on however, all the way to protocols, strike that part out. Okay, got it. So that's the, you made that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So Eric, do you, do you see that, Mike?
So on the. I am in front of that.
It removes a redundant remark. No, staff has no issue with that at all. Zero.
Okay.
I agree that it makes a redundant statement.
All right, we have a first and second to amend it. All in favor?
Be redundant, do we?
Oh, no. We're not that.
All in favor of supporting that amendment?
Aye.
Aye. All right, guys, stay with me, we're almost there. All right, item 12B, approval of updates to board bylaw 9100, organization.
Yeah, same process as before. Updates from CSBA verbatim.
Does anybody have any modifications to this? Nope.
Move approval.
I'll second. All in favor of approving this update? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. And then the next item is 13, public comments on non-agenda items. Anne, do we have anybody? She's looking.
We, we do not, Stacy.
We do not, okay. So we're moving right on to item 14, board staff discussion, because we haven't had enough of that tonight. Does anybody else have any thoughts or discussion items?
I just think that I would just, on the first point of personal privilege, should have said it earlier to Mr. Madison that I did not receive any campaign contributions from anybody because I did not have a campaign committee when I ran. Contrary to what Todd had a campaign contribute, committee and raised money from whomever across the community, which is his right to do. But I did not raise any money for my campaign for school board race. Other people may have raised money on my behalf, but I had no control or, or any control of that whatsoever. So please clarify any statements you make in the future, Todd, about that fact. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, the only thing I would want to bring up is, we had, this year was our first year as a pilot program to have ethnic studies in both our high schools, which I'm really proud of the work that our team has done to get that going. So I would love an update in the next couple of meetings about our future and how we're planning on expanding and how it went. I know it's been a powerful tool for those students to see themselves in, in their own local programming. So if we could see that sometime before this summer, yeah, so we can know what we're going into.
All right.
Unless I'm stepping over, yeah, as soon as possible so that we can know what next year looks like, yeah.
All right, anybody else have any board discussions? I want to say thank you to my board colleagues for the engaging, robust conversations tonight. We all come from different perspectives and wear different hats and have different thoughts, but I'd like that we appreciate and listen to each other before we make decisions. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate you and we appreciate the board.
Yes.
We love you.
Yeah.
I just appreciate the staff for hanging in there with us and.
Yeah.
Amazing data, because, oh my gosh. Yeah, so.
Yes, staff's been phenomenal.
All right, with that said.
Fast turnaround on our next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be talking. All right, so I, I'm, we are adjourned. Meeting's adjourned at 10:55 with 137 people on. Thank you for hanging in with us. Have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.